And I'd like to ask you to turn your cellphones off or put them on mute, please. And if you could, we'll stand as Mr. Rager gives us an invocation and we will stay standing for the presence of the Lord.
Let us bow his. Gracious and almighty and everlasting God, we thank you again for allowing us to assemble here tonight to talk about the business of our community and the county. We ask God now that you bless the commissioners as we deliberate and talk about business of this community. And God, we thank you for the citizens who have come to share in this conversation, at least listen to this conversation. So God, we thank you for what's going to take place here this evening. And we ask that you anoint it with your power from unhigh. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for being here tonight. And we'll start out with, do we have any additional agenda items? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the agenda? So move. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of consent agenda. Any changes there that we need to be, need to consider?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the item D, Language Access Plan for Lee County. And if we could, I understand we're going to have a pretty intensive discussion on the economic incentives guidelines. I don't want to keep Mrs. Kennedy here any longer. Could we move that to item A and Old Business?
Very good.
How you doing?
Okay. Any other questions on the approval of consent agenda? Any other moves? If no other questions on the consent agenda, then I need a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the changes annotated.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Public comments. We didn't have any public people sign up for public comments, so we move on into Old Business. And this is Consider Resolution Opposing Senate Bill 127, Move Lee County into New Economic Region. Mr. Crompton?
Yes, sir. I think we put Ms. Kennedy first.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. This is Old Business.
Yes, sir. I think.
I moved it forward.
She has item A under Old Business. She has the motion.
Technical assistant of law enforcement emergency.
Okay.
Thank you. You have in your package a language access plan that is part of the scattered site community development block grant project. The commissioners originally approved one in 2010, and the plan there runs for two years through the community development block grant program. So we had to update for the date of this one to be September of 2012 to 2014. This is part of a document that we have to have with any federally funded projects that assures that we will do everything we can to address people who have any other language than English when they come into a program. It's a requirement of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And the draft document originally in 2010 was something that the state came up with. So most localities piggybacked on their policy. And you have a copy of that policy in your package, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am. On item number four, on page six of the policy, it says the agency will not require the applicant recipient to pay for bilingual interpretive services. Who pays for that?
We as the, well, not trying to say, the grant administrator have to find someone that will interpret for them. And in this policy and throughout the research that we did, we know that there are staff in place for the county and the city that have Spanish. And if there should be someone here for a service other than Spanish, there are some 800 numbers that I, as a staff person, can call that are free to the agency.
And then on paragraph C in page two, or excuse me, number two, item seven, do we have to have documents in Spanish also?
We do if they are requested. We don't have to have them, like I don't go through as I'm administering the program and do every document in Spanish. But if we start servicing someone or someone from the citizenry asks for it in Spanish, then we are to translate it into Spanish for them.
On page A of the policy, letter D, number two, sub-paragraph B, it's stating here that you're required to provide the information to interested state and federal agencies upon request. I mean, it sounds like a dictate there. Is that correct?
It is.
And who pays for the training on the following paragraph? Staff and development training?
If we have, if we go through that, then the agency, and we can pay for it out of grant, the agency, the local government pays for it as part of the grant funding. If there's not enough funds there, then it does rest upon the locality to pay for that service.
So it's a combination of grants or the taxpayers?
Right.
And the grants are federal grants or state grants?
They are federal grants given to the state. This particular one goes to the Department of Commerce and goes through their small cities program when we apply for it. But it's a federal grant given to the state.
So the taxpayer pays?
Yes.
Okay. And now page nine of the program, of the policy, where, sub-paragraph three, says the Sanford Lee County Community Development Staff. Is that Bob Bridwell's office?
Yes, sir. I am a member of that.
Okay. So you're there. Are you an interpreter?
I am not.
And then compliance procedures, reporting and monitoring in letter A, the agency will complete an annual compliance report and send this report to interested state and federal agencies? How many agencies do you have to send that to?
We haven't had to send it to any, but as part of this grant, we have to send information to the Department of Commerce, the Community Assistance Division, so that we give them information if we have had to utilize this language access plan. So in other words, if someone comes.
The State Department of Commerce?
Yes, sir. If anyone comes in, we have to let the state know that we have utilized the plan that we had in place, how many we have assisted, dates, times, things like that.
And then it talks about monitoring here in Title VI, compliance officer will provide to the interested state and federal agencies, again, upon request. It continues to say they're dictating to us that we must provide them.
We've got to have this in place. And we nominate, not nominate, we appoint someone from our staff as this officer and then that information is given to the state when we start up a grant. In this case, Mr. Bridwell is our compliance officer, and he fills out any reports about this project. Should I say he signs the reports for the project?
And then I'm reading into the complaints. Have we had any complaints?
We have not. Please don't wish any on us.
No, no. Just, I'm looking at nine pages of bureaucracy, you know, bureaucracy that requires us to sustain a, and unfortunately, a number of the individuals we're dealing with, we can't even ask them if they're here legally.
I can speak to a project we administered for the city that is a community development block grant, and they were to receive relocation assistance. And they could not provide documentation or social security numbers, so we could not assist them, and that is in our federal ways. And we did not assist. And we had to document that in the files.
That's nice to know. Thank you.
Karen, I have a question for you. I got an alert today through NACO that said something about the block grant program, community development block grant program being at risk of about $3.5 billion shortfall nationwide. And it didn't specify whether scattered site housing was caught up in all of that. What's your prognosis about this coming fiscal year and the scattered site housing grant?
Everything I'm hearing from across the state is our state legislature has shifted their use of community development block grant funds with more of a target on infrastructure than on housing.
Right.
I am very concerned about that because we have been very successful, Lee County and the city of Sanford, in getting funds for housing. And both municipality and the county have done well at their infrastructure needs. That's not to say there aren't any out there. We just may not be as competitive if it truly gets shifted to infrastructure.
So the projects you already got on the books, are they at risk?
No, sir.
Or not?
Once they're obligated to us, then we're to fulfill them. We do have some applications in that I'm a little concerned about, but... What I have heard about scattered site housing for the next round is that they are going to change the amount. You know, this one is for 400,000. I heard there may be one in the 200 to 225, and that's going to be very hard. That's maybe three houses. It's going to be, you got, there has to be a decision. Is it time to value and what can you do with that 200,000?
Exactly. Moving backwards, it ought to be increasing the amount. Make it worth your while while you're going to go. Cutting it back don't make good sense. But I understand what people who are now in Charlotte want to do.
I think the focus this year, just speculating based on what I see in the legislature and the bills being introduced, is that there's a lot of interest in trying to get, you know, a quantum jump in economic growth and development in the state. And they're looking for those high payoff projects, and those typically are in infrastructure. So they're trying to mobilize all the resources they can, they can, into that area and away from the other community development type activities.
Most effective projects are the ones, to me, that are a mix, where you've got some housing, you've got some infrastructure, and it's more bang for your buck on a street.
All right. Any other questions?
I move that we approve the language access plan for Lee County as written.
Okay. Any other discussions, questions for Mr. Kennedy? I just have one. Have you ever run into a problem of not being able to get an interpreter for a specific language?
I haven't had to do it yet. I'll be honest with you. I have had to do for Spanish, and I have access to people with that at the city, but I have not had to do anything non-Spanish yet.
Okay. All right. You've heard the motion. There are no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you for moving me up.
All right. Now, Consideration Resolution Opposing Senate Bill 127.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at last month's meeting, this item was tabled. I was asked to go speak with surrounding counties and get their input on how they felt around, about it. I spoke to the Orange, Chatham, and Moore County managers, and Orange and Chatham have already taken action to send letters or resolutions to their delegation opposing, and Moore at this time is still reviewing the issue. So that's my update there. And, you know, be happy to answer any questions that might be able to answer.
Okay. Any questions for Dana? Okay. We have a motion.
I move to, actually, I'm not, I withdraw that. I'm not going to move, I'm not going to motion here.
I'm going to approve the resolution presented.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, or you just, in your discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Like Mr. Crompton, I've made a few phone calls as well. I spoke to the Charlotte area partnership director. I spoke to DOT, and I spoke to Deener representatives. And the gist of those conversations is that, is that they don't believe that it's worth the time to be resolving not to agree with Senate Bill 127 because it's a bill in flux, and it is, it is likely going to change, if it survives the legislature, which is a big question, it's likely going to change a lot. And those alignments were only really, in the minds of the executive branch agencies are only, are, is only a straw man, that it's for discussion points. There's a lot of negotiating going on in the legislature right now. I'm going to vote against the resolution simply because I can, I can see that there's going to be changes made to 127, and I don't want to have a mixed signal going up to Raleigh that says that we're opposed to any kind of realignment for efficiency. I think that, I think that there is certainly a lot of sense in having a realignment of sorts of the economic development regions with the DOT regions, with the Deener regions, and perhaps all the other executive branch agencies, so they're all organized the same way. I think I mentioned before, when I was in the state of Washington working for the Department of Social and Health Services, all of the state agencies were aligned along the same districts and regions. And so it made, it simplified it. You always knew where you were going to go to get business done. I don't, I certainly agree in concept that Charlotte's a far cry from Raleigh, or from, from Sanford and Lee County. And I think that we could probably be aligned more intelligently. I don't think we should necessarily be aligned under the Charlotte Regional Partnership, but I do think that we need to be careful about resolving and sending messages up to Raleigh that we're opposed to any kind of realignment or reorganization. The language ought to be clear that, while we recognize the need for economy and efficiency in the state government and the way it organizes, that we still have more attachment to the Triangle area and the Piedmont area than we do the area around Charlotte. So I would oppose the language that's in the, in the resolution now, but I certainly understand, you know, where the county manager's coming from, and I certainly understand why people think that this is, this is objectionable.
Well, the way I read the resolution was it specifies Mecklenburg County. It doesn't say that we're opposed to any realignment, does it? It just really says we don't want to be partnered with somebody two and a half hours away. And, I mean, that's great that you called Charlotte and Deener, and I talked to people here in Lee County that vote for us and that we're responsible for, and they don't think it's a good idea. You know, I mean, from a business perspective, from an efficiency perspective. And it may be in flux, Jim, but we need to send a signal to them what we don't want, especially if there's still some change out there that can take place. Don't you think we need to let our voice be heard?
Yeah. In fact, I encourage everyone on this board individually and jointly, if you think it's appropriate, to tell them what we would like to see, as opposed to what we don't want to see. I would think it's more, more helpful to the legislature to go up to them and say, you know, we would be in favor of a realignment if you could keep us attached with these following counties as a, you know, contiguous area of development, and it makes sense for the following reasons and not for those reasons. That's more helpful to the legislature because then they can see what we want as opposed to not what we don't like. It's, it's, they're looking for help on these things rather than just opposition. I think what happens when we, when we, and again, I'm not saying that the county manager didn't draft a good resolution, because actually, there's a lot in here, there are several things in here I agree with. Problem is, is that you want to, you want to send a positive message to the legislature. Here's, here's, here's some helpful input about what I think, how we would be best aligned as opposed to saying, we just don't want to be aligned with Mecklenburg.
Well, let's change the language on the resolution. You know. Do, I mean, what's the pleasure of the board as far as who you want to be aligned with? I mean, if we have to say we want to be aligned with Wake County, Chatham County, Moore County, you know, we want to stay the same, or are there other counties we want to, are there certain counties that we're aligned with now that you don't like us being aligned with and you prefer us being aligned with somebody else? You know, I mean...
We put the task on the county manager to do some legwork for us, and I think that if we are not going to trust his integrity on going out and doing work for us, I think we, we, we ought to respect his work here in drawing up this resolution. I think that we ought to agree to pass this resolution. However, there may be some language that needs to be changed, but I think that we need to start from somewhere. And I think that we have a pretty good resolution here. I think so. And I think we ought to take what we have and use it. And then if there is something that later on that we need to, to address, then we can do that at that particular time.
I would offer this, that if, in the event that it's the will of the board that we not do it, that we not vote for it tonight, that I would seek to undertake another resolution that would be a favorable type of resolution that said that we would be in favor of Senate Bill 127 were the following changes to be made. And that way, it would be more of a positive message up to our representatives in the House and the Senate, as opposed to a negative connotation to what they're trying to do right now. I would be willing to redraft it that way. And I'm not, I'm not in any way saying that the county manager's integrity is at issue here, because I think county manager did an admirable job of pulling together the inputs that he had. I'm just, I just, I just differ in the, in the message I think we're conveying.
Well, like in section two, where it says we're opposed to the draft map, you know, maybe change the language to say that we support any changes to our alignment to assure that our partners are within an hour of our county.
Or that all, all regional and district offices with which, with whom we do business would be located within, within a one hour's drive?
I'm working on that right now. Notice the county attorney's.
Good job.
Be very slow.
You know, I mean, I see what you're saying about the negativity, no offense, John. Yeah, but I mean, we did say we were opposed to it. We were, you know, there were some of us that were strongly against this new, you know, alignment that 127.
What did their letter say when they asked us to consider Mecklenburg?
They didn't ask us.
Yeah, exactly.
I must have missed something.
They didn't ask us.
I'm sorry. I missed that.
But our, but our representatives have, have sought on multiple occasions our inputs on things that they're working on.
Right. And I think we need to go ahead and do it instead of taping it, you know. They're maybe kind of fast up there.
I have a couple of suggestions that might, might do it. First off, if you look at section two, I would just simply eliminate the bolding of opposed. Okay? Just eliminate the bolding of opposed. In section three, Lee County is opposed to being placed in a region where the major metropolitan area is Mecklenburg County, two and a half hours away from Lee County, when the Raleigh metropolitan area is now 30 minutes away. We would prefer an alignment for all regional purposes with Wake County, Chatham County, and other more central counties, or more, or closer counties, something to that effect. To say what we want, I mean, we don't want Mecklenburg, but we do want this. And that might, that might say it. I don't think we, I think if we just, I mean, I think it might be, if you want to get the point across, you might want to say, we don't want Mecklenburg, but this is what we do want. And we do want this.
And I'm totally with you, Counselor, and I think the way to do that would be to say, here are three or four things that contribute to our economic growth and development. You know, being able to do business within one hour of where we're located with our regional district offices, being aligned with these following three or four counties with whom we share a lot in common for, for regional infrastructure projects and that sort of thing. Identify the three or four things that we'd like to see, and we support the legislature's initiative to consolidate for economy and efficiency so long as these, these factors are being met. If we do that, I think that we send a positive message, we told them what we really need and want, and we don't come across as being, you know, confrontational.
I can clean it up to do that. I have a couple of things in mind, if you want.
Yeah, I think we need to also be accurate. We're not two and a half hours away because it's, we're at Aberdeen. Where are they meeting now? In Mecklenburg?
Alvermaro. Alvermaro. Is that correct? Alvermaro. Some of those groups are meeting in Alvermaro. So I think his point here was that we were that far away from, from Charlotte.
The other thing is, I've never made it four to 30 minutes. I drive a speed limit.
Is Ken telling where you're going?
It's 70.
Takes me an hour. So, okay. So anyway, so would we take the motion off board and just table it and let Neil have a chance to write some language?
Just revisit it at the next meeting?
And I'll be glad to send you some, some inputs if you want them.
Sure. I will consider all input.
All right. So we need to motion to table.
I'll move to table it until the next meeting, which is April 15th, I think.
Okay. Any further discussion of this item? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Consider Economic Incentive Guidelines Draft. Mr. Crompton, you're up again.
Yes, sir. Once again, this updating from the last meeting, starting on page 41, you have the comments from Crystal Morpheus, who's the consultant to the Lee County EDC. So we did get comments from them. We also got a joint comment, starting on page 45, from the Chamber area, our Sanford area, Chamber of Commerce, and Donnie Odom, Chair to Lee County Economic Development Corporation, on the draft economic incentive guidelines. So we heard from two of the four. I also sent the guidelines to the city and the town. We did not get any written comments back from them on it.
Okay.
Then I think there are several.
Mr. Reeves, you had some.
Other comments that have developed since the last meeting.
Mr. Reeves, you had some handouts, I believe?
I have not had an opportunity to view them.
Okay.
Yes.
Present them tonight, or you want to wait till you have time to review them?
I'll go ahead and summarize his comments, since he asked me to do it. So basically, the, this draft takes the comments by Crystal Morpheus, and anything that she felt would be an impediment to business growth in the county, we pulled those items out. So you see everything in red, starting with one, two, and three, that we pulled out. Under section four, the newer expanding business, we created maintain a minimum of 10 jobs, was her recommendation. And then withdraw anything that required additional jobs for existing industry. And then under section six, new business would create $2 million in new investment and existing investment of $1 million from 10 million. She had also made a recommendation about some wording change under item eight, where she thought it should be made plainer that we would not be giving economic incentives upfront, that she just said that offered in advance was kind of confusing, but she wanted the word, she, she felt like the words paid upfront should be clear. And that was summarized what her comments were. And Mr. Reeves had asked me to institute her comments into her revised draft.
I believe we had another one from Jim. Mr. Reeves, do you want to speak to this before we move to James?
I wanted to see, and I do appreciate the fact that we're trying to improve and make changes, but the ones that we reviewed initially were very, very strong, in my opinion, and certainly didn't send a message that we were really serious about participating in economic development recruitment. You almost tell the folks that have made Lee County what it is, you may as well forget applying as well, because we have no interest in you, we only have interest in new operations, large operations. And if I'm not mistaken, we're contracting with Ms., what's her name?
Morpheus. Yes.
And there's no sense in paying, and I think she does an excellent job, by the way. I'm then most impressed with her articulation during our discussions. And for that reason, I wanted to see what a draft with her recommendations would look like, and that's what we've done here.
The document, the draft document that we have here, and I've sent a soft copy to GaneL that we can make available to the public as well. There were several purposes in me redrafting this as well. Mine is dated 1 April 2013 for reference purposes. As with the other attempt, I made it retitled as Economic Incentives Guidelines instead of Policy. And then down below, I've tried to tighten up the language so that everywhere that made reference to policy, we changed that to guidelines, so that we clearly understand it's consistent all the way through. Everywhere that we talked about incentive period, I made that the agreement period so that, so we clearly understand. so that, so we clearly understand we're talking about a contractual period for performance. I took out all references to industry, wherever it was, and made that business, so that it was consistent throughout the document. So, so several of the things that are in here are really just, just cleanup actions to make it so that it's consistent in its, in its addressment of economic incentives. Now, the other things that I've done in here are to, are to, are to maybe reduce some ambiguity that we have in some of the language in, in here. There are, there are multiple ways to interpret certain, certain provisions, and I wanted to make sure that we were very clear, so in some cases I lengthened the, the discussion. And I'll, and I'll get to those here in just a second. Number three, to make it sound, to make it very clear, we said that, that no economic incentives would be offered to a prospective new business that would compete for market share as writ, as written before. But because of the intense discussion about that, that I went ahead and added a guideline in here that said, this guideline will be waived if a pre-existing business has previously received an economic incentive from a public sector jurisdiction. What that means is, is that, is that rather than making it so restrictive that say there will be no case where someone would come in and compete with an existing business, it's conceivable somebody could gain this and say, well, I got an incentive in the past, but now I'm going to use this language to keep me from having competition. And I don't think that's fair. If we've given an incentive, or if we've granted an economic incentive to somebody here, then, then they ought to be subject to competition that also has an incentive. So, so we, I'd say less restrictive on this now. It's, it's waiverable if, if there's already been a recipient of an incentive that's here, and now trying to hide behind this, this provision to keep more competition from coming in. The main reason this provision was in there in the first place, and I know Ms. Morpheus disagrees with it, several of the board members disagree with it, the main reason this is in here is because we've already had one case where a Canadian company tried to move in here with the benefit of a government subsidy to compete head to head with an existing business, and potentially put them out of business. And, and that's just predatory, is what that is. There's nothing short of predatory. It's an out-of-country business that was going to come here and ruin the existing business plan of a, of a company that was already, you know, in some cases struggling.
50 years.
Yeah, been here 50 years, and, and, and they were already undercutting the same company using a state of Tennessee subsidy to compete for selling raw steel. And they were already in competition even before they moved to Lee County. So now they would come here and they would end up running them out of business, and then basically taking their employees, and then using it with taxpayer dollars. And, and, you know, we should always avoid letting the government, or letting the government get in the way of the free market. And so that's why this provision was in here, is keep the predatory type of activity from occurring. Then the next item, number four.
Can we back up?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Well, how do you address, though, Ms. Morpheus, and the chamber's concerns about that clause discouraging the clustering?
Well, it doesn't really discourage clustering, because, because clustering is, is still going to occur without incentives. If, if a company came in here and decided that because we, we have the, the skill set or the, the employment potential, or the employee potential here, because of the skills that we have, like in metal bending, we're clustered for metal bending right now. But I dare say maybe one company out of all of those ones that are here clustered got an incentive, and it was a token amount of money. Most of those guys came here naturally, because this was, they were naturally predisposed because of their B to B relationships with Caterpillar, or with other companies around. They formed here, and they came here, and it was natural for them. Plus, clustering gets promoted and encouraged by what the community college does, which is not an economic incentive, it's just training, which is something different.
But are, are we, and in your mind, are you just solely talking about the tax incentives?
Yeah, these are economic incentives. We made sure this was clear, clearly our.
Right, but later on, in, in other, in later clauses, you know, we talk about other types of incentives, like infrastructure incentives.
Well, infrastructure incentives really be doing anyway.
Those are separate. Those are completely separate.
So if a company comes in that wants to compete with an existing company, we can offer them infrastructure incentives.
Not only that, JDED grants. We don't rule out a JDED grant.
That's what I'm just trying to get clear.
This is on simply what I, what I call.
The tax.
Tax rebate, so tax, tax refund.
Okay, I, I just wanted.
That's why we call it economic incentives, so we didn't, we didn't isolate ourselves from all these other options that they have for infrastructure, because that's a rightful, in my mind, infrastructure projects are a rightful role of government, actually a responsibility that we.
Right, but I mean, the perception those still is, those are economic incentives. If, the perception is that they are as well, so I mean, I just, you know.
You raise a good point. So if there's, if there's confusion about what we would or wouldn't include under the scope of this, then we might need to add that language, and maybe put a, a separate guideline out on the other things.
Well, that's where I see.
Financial, the word financial.
Yeah, because I think the chamber.
Or tax-related incentives.
Yeah.
We can do that.
I think, was it the chamber one? Yes, the, the chamber one said, you know, and I'm kind of referring to that clause line, I know we're jumping around, but, you know, have the phrase in addition to, you know, or in place of, or some, yes, I mean, there's, we've still got some work to do, obviously. I just, I just wanted to.
If you think back.
Capital incentives.
Yeah. If you think back, there was a time when we spent a whole lot more effort and energy on just this type of tax-related incentive, building the economic base, not even talking about jobs. It was all about the, building the tax base. And that's what, that's what we did for a decade. And we're trying to move away from that, and move away to the things which are more promotional for.
But before we left that with the competition, I just wanted to make sure we were talking just about the, I guess, the cash or the tax, rather than any other ones, just for clarification.
No, that, but item one and two, in their school of business, those were tightened enough to make what we do legal, which we are not doing before. And so.
Yeah, no, there was an objection, there was an objection, Charlie, to the, to the number two, because I think, I think Mr. Mulligan from the School of Government said that's redundant or unnecessary. And, and I, and I clearly understand why he would say that, because the Moretti case, case law says that you will, you must have an interstate component to this thing. There must be an out-of-state competitor, or it's not legal to offer an incentive in the state of North Carolina. So number one addresses that. However, number two addresses another subset of that, which I think needs to be called out because of the, of the logic that's involved. It's conceivable that a company that's in Wake County that wants to move to Lee County and get some cash to do it, could come to Lee County and say, you know, I want to move to Lee County, would you offer me some money to do it? And then we say, yes, we would, but you've got to have an interstate competition. And then they could go to, you know, Danbury, Virginia, and say, you got a site up there that I could look at? And then they make a token effort to say, well, I would think about, maybe about going to Danbury, Danbury, Virginia. And then they come down here and say, okay, I got, I got a site up in Danbury, Virginia that represents my token competition, so I'm eligible. What we want to do is, we want to avoid them gaming the system, a company doing that. And I think that's already happened once with us. We want to avoid the gamesmanship here by saying, look, a bona fide interstate component must be there, and we don't want anyone jumping county lines to, you know, to get a cash grant.
Well, but I still, you know, I mean, in, in, in reading Ms. Morpheus's memo, you know, she raises some really good concerns with me on the clause one and two, though. I mean, I know you've left them in there, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue again, you know. What, what, what if you've got a company looking at two counties? We've had that many times before across the states.
Doesn't apply.
You know.
If they're looking, if they're looking, if they've got a bona fide interstate competition, and they are, they're going to meet all of our other thresholds.
Okay.
They're eligible. They're eligible to compete.
Well, then, the same with an expansion. If they've got an existing company in another county, and they just want to expand here, in another county, they're still eligible.
They're still eligible, because that's not jumping a county, they're not, they're not pulling out of one county to move to here. And I will emphasize that we have actually sent this language up to the legislature and encouraged them to, to put this into a bill that would take it statewide, to keep counties from competing with each other.
Well, that, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable.
And it's starting to resonate a little bit, I think.
Yeah, I think the only, you know, to gain some flexibility there is, if a company can't find land or new buildings or things like that in another county that they're presently in, if they're not able to get buildings and stuff there, we would probably want to consider that if they will move.
Well, I'll give you a good example. We had more machine tools. More machine tool came down from Chatham, because the, the nature of the regulations in Chatham said you can't be within 200 feet of the roadway or whatever on 421, they couldn't expand.
Right.
And, and so they were, obviously, they were free to move to Lee County, whether or without an incentive. At that time, we had a very pro-incentive type policy, and we gave them a grant to move in here. They were going to come here anyway, because we had a space right across where I live, on 421, a big building they could move into, and so they got a cash bonus by coming down here. But I would offer to you that, that, and if you want to put language in there, Charlie, that we, that we addressed that, that says if we can get a statement from the county that says there's no room for them to grow, they have no facilities for them, that we'd be, that we, we, we consider a waiver here. I don't know that any county, I don't know if we'd provide that to another county, if somebody came to us and said.
I think that's more the company's call, you know. I mean, certainly no county's going to say, I'm sorry, but, you know, we just don't have a place for them to do business here.
Just remember, though, just remember, they just shut down. We just got, we just got eaten up in this predatory business by Wake County, who just took Kangaroo's headquarters away from here, just took them right off of 421, and just moved them up there into Cary. Here recently, I just noticed that the windows were black this last week. They took the sign down, the building's empty. They moved them up to Wake County, they, they recruited them up there. And, and I, and, you know, we're going to lose when we compete with Wake County, and Durham County, and Mecklenburg County, we're going to lose those games. We need to get that kind of language in there.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm sorry, keep going.
Okay, so, the, the other thing that I did in number four, and it got a little lengthy in the language, but I apologize for that, but, but I think it's necessary to say that, that when you have an increase in the number of full-time employees that you're engaging, that you're becoming eligible for, that what you need to do is have, have to maintain that through the contract period, because there's games that get played now, guys receiving incentives, where they, where they'll, they'll increase certain staff, and then they'll decrease other staff. So their net headcount really doesn't go up. Or they'll have certain games that they play with, with some less than full-time employees, you know, temporary hires. And so this is really, I think what we've done with this series of updates is to make it so that the, the companies clearly understand that if they're going to get, if they meet the, the, you know, the, the 25 employee positions, that they, they've got to maintain those positions through that period of time. It's clear that they have to be full-time employees, and that, and that, we haven't, we haven't made it so restrictive that they can't change the title or the job description for the employee, so they can, they can swap one out for another. But what they can't do is they can't reduce other employees, their, their overall total headcount has to remain at or above that level that's contracted, it's specified in the contract. And that's, that's what we've tried to do with this language, is to make it so that there's, there's no real wiggle room that says the company can come in here and play a game and get credit for it economically.
The thing that I like about the way you changed it here is the fact that there were no specific numbers.
Right.
In other words, that way we can deal with small businesses as well as large.
That's right. The existing businesses here, I think the issue was, though, some of these small businesses that want to expand, which we know is going to happen, they want to become eligible for this, and we haven't, that, that will be on a case-by-case basis, and we'll put it in the contract. This is the number of employees based on what they petitioned.
Right.
And so we've, we've opened that up a little bit.
Wait, but you still.
But for the new businesses, the, it's 25, it's 25 jobs.
Well, you know, again, I go back to Ms. Morpheus, you know, with her being the expert, that, you know, the average minimum threshold of job creation is 10. And I know, you know, a lot of, especially a lot of the high-tech companies, you know, with biotech, biofuels, nanotechnology, you know, you've got a pretty expensive business startup and, and high salaries, and they really only start up with, you know, 10 or 12 people.
Well, I'm sure we take the number 12.
Well, but it, he still has 25.
It's 25 for new businesses.
On the very, very first.
New businesses coming.
Yeah, could we lower that to 10?
Well, I would oppose that. I would oppose it. I think we've, we've relaxed the existing business to try to encourage business growth. I, I think Ms. Morpheus would also agree that 75% or so of all the new business growth in the recovery will be from existing businesses that are here now.
I don't question.
And, and I'd say, dare say, 95% of them will not seek any incentives. They'll do it on their own. And, and they, they find these incentive agreements very onerous. I mean, they're very difficult to, to work around, because then they got to worry about meeting that threshold every quarter, every reporting period, and not falling below it, or the clawbacks kick in. So, I mean, most of them want flexibility and ability to take their, their employee headcount up and down as they grow. These, this is really targeting those companies, and rightfully so, when you're going to offer taxpayer money to assist these folks, you want them to, to be, to be held to a standard, and you want to make sure that it's for a substantial amount of, of economic growth in the county when they do it.
So, okay, like, just to make sure I'm clear, the, the 25 new jobs, but they don't necessarily all have to be full-time jobs, those 25?
Yes, full-time jobs. It says that down there in number five, each job counted towards the incentive must be full-time.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I didn't say that we were setting the bar low, it was never any intent to set the bar low. The intent was to encourage growth and to not take ourselves out of the game. This is not a, a close for business sign. What this is, is this is, this says, we'll do business with you, but it's, you're going to have to meet some pretty stringent thresholds in order to, in order to do business with, with incentives. The number, the number, number six, I want to draw your attention to that one. You know, I agree that we can drop down the existing business threshold down to 5 million on the investment. I know that Krista wanted to drop down even further, down to 1 million, I think. You know, this was, this was a kind of a, of a par recommendation from the School of Government, if I'm not mistaken. I think they're the ones that said, you know, 20 and 10 was about right. I'm, I'm okay with going down to five for an existing business. But I think if we take it down much lower than that, everybody and his brother is going to come to us and say, you know, we want taxpayer assistance. And, I mean, we need to set these thresholds high enough that it really has an impact on the county. And then, and then secondly, that they may have to sustain that investment. This is very important, because companies will come in here and they'll invest in personal property, they won't, they'll even lease a building, and then they'll invest in personal property to meet the threshold, and then you'll see that rapid acceleration, or rapid depreciation kick in, and then the next thing you know, you're not collecting anything on taxes. So they need to, this, that level of investment that they're committed to has to be sustained through the contract period, so we're collecting taxes off of it. And then, I, like Ms. Morpheus, I agree with number eight. I, I said the economic incentives will not be paid in advance of business investment, rather than offered in advance. That's a better way to say it. The, I tightened up, or I expanded the language on, now be it further resolved, down below, where it said, instead of deviating from the policy, I think that's unnecessary language, we already have the right to deviate or waive the policy, and we've done that in the past when we needed to. We don't need to write it into the contract. It's basically advertising that we won't stick to our, our, our guidelines. And I think that's unnecessary language. And then down below that, I said, I clarified, the economic incentives hearing will be done as according to law. And then I made it a separate sentence addressing the fact that we will not vote in the same meeting as the public hearing, that we'll vote in a subsequent meeting. I want to make sure that was clear. It's not required by law that we do that, we do that because that's our policy, that we will, we will vote at a subsequent meeting. And then the last item here is about standard agreement. I tried to clean that up, to talk about that, that we weren't asking the county attorney to go back and revisit all the old existing contracts that we have. I think that's already been kind of surveyed. I think Mr. Talbert did that last year. What we're asking them to do now is to, is to look at our standard contracting documents or our formats that we have, and tighten those up to make them consistent with policy. So that's it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I will make one more comment. I, I did not think it was necessary for us to have to vote on these tonight, other than to discuss them again and try to get our arms around where we want to go with this, because I knew that there were other versions floating around. This is still a work in progress, and I know that the EDC's had some inputs, the chamber's had some inputs. I, I would like for us to, to maybe take one more meeting to get this right, or to get it where we got as much of a consensus as we can get before we put it to a vote.
And I know one, the memo we got from Mr. Joyce from the chamber, he did state, and I thought it was fair, that, you know, we gave them a limited time deadline, and, you know, then a holiday, you know, year just right before, that he did state that, you know, give them more time, they'd be happy to work with us. I don't know, we could have a couple of us meet with the chamber and the EDC, you know, to get some bounce back from what we talked about tonight, you know, before our next meeting on the 15th. our next meeting on the 15th.
Well, I, I would suggest that they take a look at the two recent versions.
Correct, right.
And work from best, those two drafts, and get back.
Right.
And my concern is, you know, one of the reasons we started this in the first place was to bring our policies and guidelines into the legal staff. And I'll make sure that we keep that in there. We have an executive board that meets, Jim and I go to it. You're welcome to come. We have another meeting.
We can schedule one as early as tomorrow morning?
Not the majority of this week shows up.
Can we put it off till Wednesday?
We'd be happy to schedule a little bit.
Seven o'clock.
All right, thanks, Brad. Okay, any, any other concerns?
You may want that meeting to address more than just the incentives policy. You may want it to address the MOU, because we're gonna get into that in a second.
Okay.
Yeah, make, and give a little bit more time for them to digest everything.
Let's see if they have any comments while they're here.
I'm fine, I'm okay.
I'm sorry.
Let's see if they have any comments while they're here.
Good. Sure. If you would for a recording, give us your home address.
My name is Brad Simpson. I'm the current chairman of the Sanford Area Chamber of Commerce Board Director.
Thank you for coming.
As far as comments, yes. I mean, we applaud the, uh, the commission for taking this task and revising the incentives policy that we have in place now. We completely agree that it needs to be revamped, it needs to be revitalized, it needs to be updated. We completely applaud the effort. However, you've seen our memo, we also concur with Crystal's recommendations on the drafts. Our goal is for Lee County to be as competitive as possible. Economic recruitment is a game of attrition, is a process of elimination. You have companies, you have consultants, you have all of the above that are working on the internet, working with local economic development coordinators like Crystal, and they are eliminating sites. They are determining which site, which county, which region, which state meets their criteria. And you do not know if you have been removed from that list. Our concern is that we have a, we will have a policy that will enable us to be removed from the list quickly. And I think that the, the statements that ring true with, with us are throughout Crystal's recommendations, where the last bullet point states that there is no policy that she's read or heard of in North Carolina that contains these provisions. That doesn't mean that we can't be different. That doesn't mean that we can't change the rules. Things like competing intra-state competition, and I know, you know, of the Moretti case, of the, I believe it's the Ho case in Durham County, where it was alleged that there was no interstate component, even though later it was determined by the court that there was, therefore it was deemed okay. One of the court rulings also implies that as long as there is a public good that is being met by incentive, that it is legal, which does open up intrastate for discussion. I'm not commenting legally, but I'm saying that that's in the Superior Court's ruling. So, what we want to see is that, we want to be as competitive as po, as possible. Whether it is determining the level of investment, what I would urge everyone in this commission to do is take 20 minutes on the internet and look at Harnett County, look at Chatham County, look at Moore County, and then determine whether or not we fall within the parameters of what they're saying, or what their policies are. What we would like to see is a tiered incentive policy, whether it is a level of investment at a certain amount. If you invest $1 million, you may be eligible for a certain percentage of a rebate on your property taxes. If you reach a second level, you're eligible for a different percentage. If you are a existing business and you expand at a certain economic level, you may be eligible for this percentage. Harnett County has a great two-page, uh, policy that has a lot of this type of information. And I mention them because I think our product in Lee County is similar to theirs. And that's another thing that we wanted to emphasize from the chamber to the EDC, is that we need to, the product that Lee County offers needs to match the incentive policy that we offer to the world. Right now, we're offering a policy that would make us, I guess, equivalent to RTP, or somewhere like that, where we can demand that if you're going to come here, you must meet such a high threshold of investment. I think it's wonderful. I'd love to see Lee County be in a place where we can say, "We will not offer incentives unless you bring $20 million." Maybe in 15 or 20 years, where at that point, this policy can be revisited at that time. But what we want to see is that we are competitive, and that we are getting looks, and we are getting calls, because we have a policy in place that can be voted on. Having a policy in place does not mean you're going to give away an incentive. The chamber's view, my view as a small business owner, is not that incentives are the end-all and be-all when it comes to economic investment, but they are a part of the world that business exists in today. I'd like to, uh, you know, I'm sure everyone's been paying attention to the, the MetLife deal that hit the papers a few weeks ago, and there's a quote there from one of Cary's, uh, town councilmen, that I think really rings true. He states, "What you'd like to see is the whole concept," and he's referring to incentives. "What you'd like to see is the whole concept to go away, but I'm locked into it because I want to remain competitive, and I'm not going to, on a principle, lose out on a great opportunity like this," and he's referring to the MetLife deal. So, I think that summarizes the, uh, the whole point of economic incentives, that we probably all philosophically agree that we'd like for them to disappear, but until the rest of the world plays by the same rules, if we change the game, we're the only ones that have such high guidelines that don't bring business here, then I think we're gonna see a decline, and I don't think Lee County can afford that.
Wait, let me, uh, make a comment and then ask you a question or two.
Okay.
I've read with interest what Mecklenburg County said about that same deal. It wasn't quite the same as what Cary said. Mecklenburg County said, "It appears as if we had the wool pulled over our eyes," I'm paraphrasing here, "that this company was already making moves to come here before the money was even put up, put forward," and that there was, there was clear indication, and several folks are very upset about that, that there were millions of dollars that changed hands for a company that was already moving to North Carolina. That's, that's the opinion of some of the commissioners down in Mecklenburg County. There's some folks very upset about that, that they think that, that, that was a behind-the-scenes deal that was worked. The second thing I would offer to you is, you know, you, you highlighted Harnett County's as being a lot to like in their policy. I would challenge you to produce evidence that Harnett County's economic incentives policy is working in any aspect for Harnett County. In fact, I would look back about five years ago where Harnett County was, and look where they are now, and they've really stepped up their level of recruitment, and it's not paying any incentive, or, I'm sorry, it's not paying any dividends. Harnett County's got a lot of rooftops going in, they don't have a lot of business coming in. And the reason they don't, I think, is because it just proves that, that having this eye candy out there for economic incentives isn't in and of itself gonna, gonna benefit you on getting more industry. What gets industry here is an available and skilled workforce, a proper infrastructure that's in place, and, and, and the educational opportunities, and the tax base, and, and the, and the B-to-B relationships, the, all those other things are really the compelling drivers to moving industry in here, not your incentives policy. Incentives policy is, as, as Tommy Mann, the old, your, or predecessor on the EDC used to say, "It's icing on the cake," is what that is. And, and as you say, it's process of elimination. But I would argue that, that our policy actually is, I think, very refined compared to Harnett County's. And Chatham County is revisiting theirs right now, because, because this great Chatham Partners initiative, which really looks glitzy and fancy, the Chatham Partners relationship's really not recruiting. In fact, if you look, they've lost about 80% of their manufacturing base over the last five or six years. 80%. That was highlighted in our recent study.
That may have a lot more to do with some of their other policies, not necessarily economic, but from zoning, planning, et cetera.
Well, I agree with you there too. However, there's a lot of factors that go into it. It's not just the incentives policy.
I understand. I mean, and that's where, you know, if you look at the list from the North Carolina School of, uh, I'll get this here, but, one or two papers in this folder. The Economic Development Handbook from the School of Government, I believe it's on one of the last pages, where they discuss, they actually list a table that has to do with all of the items. It's table one on page 30, the 12 items that have to do with site selection factors for industrial facilities, and state local incentives ranks number seven. I agree, all of the other items, highway accessibility, labor, occupancy costs, energy availability, skilled labor, it's all on this list, but incentives is there. That's what we're saying. I'm not, and I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, and I'm not saying that Harnett County is doing a better job than we are. I think we have a better product than they do. I think that we have a long way to go, though, as far as infrastructure and available sites that are ready to start on, ready, shovel ready. I think they do have an upper hand there, but one reason that they're not burning down the, uh, there's not a path being blazed there is because it's not as attractive to be there as it may be in other regions. But they're getting looks.
They got an interstate highway that runs through their, their county. They got state parks in their, in their county. They got proximity to Fort Bragg in their county. They got a lot of things going for them, and they're not beating us at the game. In fact, we've got a very strong manufacturing base today, and the B-to-B relationships are probably building that base out more than anything we'll ever offer in incentives. I just...
That's why I, I want to see us have, you know, as competitive a policy as possible to build on all the assets that you mentioned, because I agree, we have a strong manufacturing base, we have strong healthcare, we have a lot of things that I think should attract people here, and I want to continue to do that.
Well, and I, I think, Brad, what you're saying is, is kind of what I've said all along, is, um, the, the nature of the game now, yes, I don't like incentives either, but I don't like our citizens being unemployed and wanting jobs.
Sure.
So, you know, we, we need to do as much as we can to bring employment to the county. And what I've understood and, and had an education on in the last few years is exactly what you're saying. You know, you don't have the CEOs come in from companies anymore and sort of scout out counties or cities to, to cite businesses. They hire a consultant firm like Ms. Morpheus, some of her peers, and, and they have that punch list that you just referred to from the Institute of Government, and incentives are on there. And they don't even give you a second look if you don't have everything on that punch list.
That's not true. That's just not true.
I...
They overlook a lot of things. They'll overlook a lot of things. If you've got that key item they're looking for...
Jim!
They will... That punch list is just that, it's a punch list.
Well, that may be true for military company contracts, but, you know, out in the real world, you know, the, the way a lot of these consultant firms work, they take that punch list, everybody is so hungry for business and for jobs, that, you know, it's not hard to find a place to, to set up shop. And they take that punch list and go around, and they look at the counties and the municipalities that offer as much of that as possible. I mean, you know, we, some of the language that we put in here, we may take ourselves out of the game for some great opportunities for our citizens. Not that, I mean, because ultimately, we vote thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yeah, I...
You know, if we make it too restrictive, we don't even give our citizens or us the opportunity to have a change.
There's no question, that there are things in this, this guideline that would probably take us off the list for some companies. There's no question. But then we're already off the list for about 90% of the companies. So it's a matter of, 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 of it being a subjective assessment, that, do you want to say, you know, "We're inviting all comers for anything on the table," or do we want to say, "You know, we, we welcome you to come here and request this if you can meet these following thresholds, which will really make a difference in Lee County?" And also consider what we, the, the workshop we just went through, where we had it described that we have one of the largest densities of manufacturing in the state. We have a very strong reliance on manufacturing right now, and it's creating for ourselves a bubble of unemployment that we can't seem to beat. If we want to keep doing more of the same with the same type of incentive policies, then, then basically, we're never gonna get out of that bubble. We're gonna keep it here. If we want to diversify our economy, and we want to, we want to truly grow the county and grow the, the median household income, and reduce the poverty level, we've gotta go after other types of businesses, and we don't do it with traditional incentives. We're just not going to.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Brad? I have to stand up real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Mr. Reeves, do you have any more?
I think we'll just wait until the next meeting and see what we get.
Okay. So, since this was more for discussion, and we didn't require votes tonight, right? Okay, so, move on to the next item of business, which would be, we're down to renewal of gymnastic lease agreements, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Reeves?
Chairman Parks, Commissioners, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Yonbro. Our lease over at the gymnastics building is expiring after five years. We've, we've been in that facility for five years, and it's been a, a very good relationship with Dean Real Estate over there. Our program has grown dramatically, it, it's a good location. We came from the Ford Building on the corner, corner and Carthage Street, on air-conditioned sweatbox in the summertime, and attendance fell off quite a bit then. And a good session, a three-month session of gymnastics during the school year would be about 300, 350 students. This session, we have registered over 600 students in the program, 600 to 10, 612. So, it's a fantastic program. Part of that is, is where we are in the fact that we have air conditioning now, so summer enrollment's up. But, uh, the, the lease is expiring. The original lease called for 125% holdover clause, but in speaking with the owner, that's, that's not the case, they won't do that. And I met with Mr. Dean back last fall, and his daughter actually is the one that I've been speaking with as far as the leasing agreements, because she's handling more of the, the day-to-day operations of it. That facility over there is 7,700 square feet. Currently, we're paying $36,000 a year, which is $4.67 per square foot. My understanding, when we entered into the lease five years ago, that typically leases or flat space ran between $5 and $7. So, we're still below $5. We had a five-year lease because, we originally proposed a three-year lease for that building. When we started to go in there, state fire laws required the building to be sprinkled. And so, Mr. Dean spent $35,000 to sprinkle the building and ask for a five-year lease instead of the three-year lease. And we staged payments so that we didn't get hit all at once in, in doing that, because we moved from $1,000 a month at, at the Ford Building to, you know, something just south of $3,000 a month, which is basically what we're paying now. And they, they are agreeable to continuing that lease, and, and I think it's a good deal for us. Folks are accustomed to coming there, and obviously, our program's grown.
So is this one for another five years?
No, sir, this is for three years, yes.
What's, what are the fees that are paid for the 600-plus students that are, that are there?
Varies according to the amount of time. We'll have a half-hour class, it's like $30. Actually, it's 29, and you'll get to that in fees and charges later on.
Right, in the budget.
In our recommendations, yes, sir. Because that, that created some other issues for us. But basically, it's, it's $30 for a half-hour, $60 for an hour class, and then it goes up to 75 for an hour-and-a-half class, and then for each additional hour, it goes up.
All right, and, and, and my math is not the best, I was a public school guy. Yeah.
I got a calculator.
Okay. Bad joke, I'm sorry. I, I was just curious, the, the net-net on the revenues, if you add in the cost of our staff, which is the primary part of our operations, and then the cost of the facilities on the lease, how much are we, what, how much of a drain is that on the county's taxpayers?
That's the best return on county's investment, because the gymnastics program projected $133,000 plus in revenues for next year.
$133,000 in revenues?
Yes, sir.
And our staff costs?
Our staff, utilities, costs, supplies, those sorts of things. Ballparks, about $120,000.
And that includes the lease?
Yes, sir.
So you're, you're, you're netting out $13,000?
Yes, sir.
So why are we discussing this?
Uh...
Oh, 'cause we have to vote it?
You have to approve the lease, yes, sir.
I'll shut up.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Any discussion?
One comment. One comment, I did ask, I did take a look at, what did I say, uh, extend, extending or an option?
Having an option for an additional three years. Our, our thought process when we entered into this lease was that if we go five years, then we could take that ten acres of land at OT Sloan, that was donated by, by Temple Sloan. We could take that and we could put a building on that lot beside the Boys and Girls Club that would house gymnastics and, and have multiple courts in there. Uh, it would give us a new entrance into the park and, and we could do some other things, some other fields and, uh, that sort of thing over there, but, uh, times went south on us and, and money's not available and so that's where we are.
But that's, but that's, that's looking at the present and the present economic situation, which is kind of at the tail end of a really bad recession.
Yes, sir.
If, if you, if you develop the plans for that, that seems to make a lot of sense and I would look at that as a capital investment downstream, that'd make a lot of sense.
Yes, sir.
But I would, I would definitely keep that on the books, that's one of the most enticing things I've heard, plans I've heard in a while, far better than the dog park thing.
Can we get him to come back next time and, will you come back next time and talk about the dog park?
I'll wait.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
No, I, I've said yes, I mean, I, I, something was brought to light, Mr. Reeves and I talked about this afternoon that I just found about, found out about today at lunch, so if maybe he could come back next time and talk about the dog park, I didn't want to get into it tonight when that wasn't.
What'd you find out about?
I don't know. I don't want to.
You don't want to get into it?
Well, I mean, just out of respect to Mr. Payne, I don't.
No, I'm bringing it to the next one, I think we're, we're headed towards a lengthy meeting at the next meeting and maybe we could, uh, bring it up in May.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for John or any just further discussion? We have a motion on the floor?
Well, we also have a recommendation, I hope the board will consider supporting, and that is keeping that bill and another, an additional three years just in case.
Okay, did we amend the motion or?
Yeah, I would, I would have amended the motion to say I move to approve the, uh, the request for the, uh, for this lease and then with the condition, with the condition that he also go back and investigate the option of, of extending it an additional three years.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
It's a good program, John, thank you.
Okay, budget amendment. Are you doing it tonight? Very young. Didn't see you.
Good evening, we have before you a budget amendment allocating an additional nine hundred ninety-nine dollars that we have received from the state for the Energy Neighbor Program. It is a social service, a program that is administered by social services and assists clients with their heating and cooling needs. And this pot sits here if you have any questions, but it's a hundred percent funded program.
I move to approve.
Okay, you have a motion to approve, any discussion or questions, please. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, consider acceptance of state revenue for healthy communities, Mr. Jones, please.
The state gives us a aid counties package every year of different programs to support our, our programs and occasionally we'll get federal funds that pass through the state that are also included in aid county funds. And this year the state gave us six thousand dollars at the beginning of the year and then, uh, sometime in mid, midway through the fiscal budget year for us, they found that they had the federal, you know, uh, federal funds came available, so they're distributing that to all the counties in equal amounts. And this is for a, uh, program for, uh, I guess we would call it healthy communities, uh, their incentives for prevent, prevention of chronic disease, injury and illnesses. So, uh, we are, I guess, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer the questions. If I can't answer, Sandra Boyd is here, can possibly provide answers.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is in addition to the normal funding that we, that we already had anticipated for the budget, correct? And, and you're, you're merely asking for us to accept the additional federal money to be used for the healthy communities program?
That's right.
All right, and, and could you or Sandra, one or the other, tell us what, what specifically, additionally, we will do with this money?
All right, um, this federal money's more restrictive than the state money we got. Uh, they, let me get my notes out here. We can use it for, uh, supplies and programs that we're promoting, uh, healthy incentives, signage, media campaigns, staffing, for instance, contracts with someone to do an educational program, uh, although there's not much time for that. On page three of five in the, uh, contract addenda that's within your package, um, there are a list, a long list on either three D.
Right.
There's a long list of strategies that we can use or that we can adopt in our community action plan.
I saw three of them checked, I was just curious if that's what you were planning on spending the money on?
We were looking at those. We found out through a, a meeting, a webinar, that there were certain things we thought we might use it on that they cut us out on, like we can't buy equipment, we can't buy playground equipment, but if we buy timbers and bolts and screws, we can assemble something and call it supplies and we could buy something, so it's kind of tricky, but we, uh, we have been talking to Mr. Payne at Parks and Recreation, we have some other community stakeholders and we're trying to figure out some options that can be quick, for instance gravel on a pathway to walk, for a walking path or, um, landscape and timbers for raised beds for a community garden.
One second, what, what was it, which park was it? Horton Park. Is it possible that we could do something in, in partnership with the Parks and Rec on Horton Park to increase the?
Well, we were talking about bringing the fence in a little bit and putting a walking path around that fence in Horton Park.
It sounds like a very intelligent thing to do with it.
So we could provide the supplies, but we wouldn't be able to pay for, uh, the labor or, um, or any equipment that would go into that, but.
Voice count project.
Voice count project. Sounds like an Eagle project.
Eagle project.
And like.
Calling all Eagle candidates.
We only have until the end of May to, to use this money up, then they say we're going to get another chunk of money, it's going to be in the form of a block grant and they say they think that that money's going to start coming in regularly as a block grant. Excuse me.
Well, you know, I would just ask that, that, since Mr. Payne's still here, if they had the opportunity to identify what specifically ought to be the enhancements in those areas and give that back to you so you could coordinate the materials acquisition, that would be, that would be a very good candidate for the money, I would think.
Yes, sir, we've been in conversation for several weeks.
Okay, good.
And Sandra has also identified some other stakeholders, there's a community garden, uh, that is right next to Horton Park that we're, we're also looking at.
Very, very good.
So we're trying to, and maybe tie those together and if they can walk through the, the gardens and get incentives to go home and start their engines while they're walking, that might be one more step closer to some healthy.
So do we have this funding wise here?
No, sir, this is a one-time.
President.
This is, they've re, they've sort of revamped the, uh, health promotions program now they're calling it healthy communities and, uh, is that right, healthy communities, right, Sandra? Healthy communities.
Okay, is this a mandated program or is this just something we volunteered to do?
We bought.
It's.
We always had it.
Pardon?
We, we always had health promotion.
Well, we've always had health promotion, that's one of our goals in public health is to promote, uh, healthy activities and health services. Uh, so I would say it's an essential, I used to carry a list of the essential public health services, but I would say that, uh, health education is an essential public health service.
Would, would any of this money be eligible for lighting, for event, outside lighting?
That would be equipment we would be able to. But it's very restrictive and so, uh, a lot of it's geared towards, uh, policy development and, but they also do allow some, uh, changes in, or creation of some systems to promote, uh, healthy activities or education towards healthy living. So signage, we could do billboards, we can do media campaigns, we can hire, uh, people to give lectures and things like that, we just don't have much time to line that up.
We could, we could actually almost afford to hire Meter Bloomberg to come in and tell us about sugary drinks and stuff, right?
I, I can tell you.
Let me ask the question here. Let me ask the question here. Okay, in your background statement, and I didn't see any thing in this, where we start moving forward holding people accountable, we give them training, education, what do we use to check to see that the taxpayer money is going for good cause? Are we doing any tracking to see if the health gets better? And what, what do we do to see that that?
It does say in this, uh, the issuing of this passed down a letter from feds that we provide annual reports on the progress of these. Now, I don't know if that means it will show that people are getting healthier, but it will show some accountability of how the money is counted, what's being used.
So we can show that they're getting healthier, do we just keep doing it?
It's, it's, this is a tough thing to measure immediately, but, uh, from year to year, we get reports of the overall health of our community and we.
Who, who gives us those?
Well, the hospitals provide the information, the private practices provide the information, all areas, collated. Don't we do the community health statement every year?
But I also wonder where those figures come from, how accurate are they?
Sandra, excuse me, Chairman, could Sandra come up and, and, and?
She's bored a lot of the.
Yeah, could Sandra come up and?
If you'd like to say.
We do the community health assessment every four years and then between the four years we do a state of the county report and within that, each one of the priority areas, we have task force. Those task forces are, we do action plans and with those action plans, we do evaluations each year to see if we're meeting the goals.
Okay, and what does that consist of, sir?
Let me think around my mind. Obesity is the main one, it's not, we don't have any programs in place that, that kind of, we have, we've done education, convention programs, it's smart move more program, which is a evidence-based program, we've done in faith community, we've done within the schools, we've done throughout the community. And it shows over time that people do make changes, now do these changes last? I can't say that, but those are, those are the measures that we have in place and I, when it comes to obesity and things of that nature, you can put education in place, like with this money, we're willing to promote physical fitness, educate people about physical fitness, make it readily available within the communities, but it's still going to come down to that personal, whether they're going to make a change or not, is this going to be a short-term change or is this going to be short, a long-term change? But what we are looking at are evidence-based programs that we know that works, the scientific evidence is out there. And as we know with behavior change and health education, it takes three to five years, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but I do hear what you're saying.
Okay, so we've been doing this for a while, why?
Yes, sir.
Education programs. So at what point can we determine that taxpayer dollars either are being utilized correctly or being wasted? I mean, that seems to be your job.
Yes, sir.
All right, so when we allocate funds or approve funds, at what point in time do we decide whether we're spending the taxpayer dollars reasonably?
I can, I can sort of answer that question for you, it won't be an absolute correct answer, but in, in public health, people don't, once you tell them, you know, eat right and exercise, they don't remember everything forever, they forget after a while or new people come along and they also have to be engaged and, and given the information, so it never ends really, there's not a point where you're all, all of a sudden going to see a drop and then from then on, there's not going to be a problem. So it's a, it's kind of like, uh, I'm from the onsite wastewater field, so prevention is better than trying to fix it after, after the fact. And that's what we do with these funds, it's prevention, it's education and it's an ongoing process, it, it won't be, we, we, we will never be through with this, to tell you the truth.
Well, I, and I understand that and I understand, you know, gradual improvement or gradual disprovement, but are we gathering enough data, are we tracking it well enough at, to some point in time that we can come up and say it's working or not working?
Well, there's a shift now and it's, and it's really being pushed from, especially from the federal, the, the buzzword now is, uh, uh, incentives, the, uh, no, what you just said that.
Evidence-based.
Evidence-based, oh, it's always this question. Evidence-based means that the program that we're paying for now has been researched and shown to be effective and we can't just go out and select, uh, an idea or to, to do something if it's not evidence-based, the federal government won't fund any more programs unless there's ample research that shows it's an effective program and it will bring the numbers down. So as they shift, and this has just started over the last couple of years, we'll, we'll be going to evidence-based programs and, and then, and this wording of this document, it says evidence-based programs, our strategies will show an improvement, they should show an improvement, uh, because these programs have improved work and, and each smart move more is.
Is one of those programs, again, where I sit in health education, we pay on prevention end on the other end and we're trying to combat this on this end because we see obesity is mainly tied by, we can cause us to death, you know, stroke, you know, heart disease, diabetes, so that's why we, you know, try to do the prevention and, you know, long-term, it takes a while to see a, a behavior change, it's not going to happen overnight, but I do hear what you're saying, but again, we're, we're starting, it's been a paradigm shift, we've done our education prevention differently, but like Mr. Jones said, now we're doing the evidence-based, like with the Community Transformation Grant, we're trying to put policies in place, we're looking at, uh, making fresh fruits and vegetables more readily available, working with our local farmers market, the community, this is, this is a different twist, we haven't done this before. These are evidence-based that we're trying to do.
I would argue that, that there are things that you know intuitively that make a difference. If you think about the difference in our era of growing up and parents throwing us out of the house, we didn't have video games and electronics that kept us tied to the television, sitting around drinking our sugary drinks and, uh, and eating candy and playing video games all day long, we got out of the house, we went out and we exercised. Today, it's because of a, a little more dangerous society, we, we need these neighborhood and local parks for these kids to go to, to have the opportunity to get out and exercise. So that's why I think these things like Horton Park are very important, Pocket Park on Maple that the city just put in, I think those are very important because that, those kids will get out there and burn calories and play outside. And so these are intuitively smart programs, if we can work in partnership between Health Department and the Parks and Rec Department, I think that this is really a good thing. I think the walking trail encouraging and promoting programs to people who use the walking trail, uh, is good. Yeah, so those, those kinds of things, I think make a lot of sense.
And what we do on those trails is put up signage about metabolism or, you know, calories, things so that they can read and learn while they're walking, so that's part of this, signage is part of the walking trail.
Yeah, I, it, like I say, I'm not against the program, I'm against the program if we're not tracking and determining if we're making progress or not making progress. And so when we come back again, if we come back again asking for some more funds, so that's all taxpayer dollar, I don't care if it's a grant or whatever it is, I want to see, you know, that we've made some progress. If not, then we need to reevaluate the program and see if it's working.
Empirically, one of the things you can do, and, and I know John can help you with this, is to do a, a periodic dipstick check on the parks, you know, if, if we invest some money into Horton or Sanley or wherever, if we invest some money, look at what our headcount does, if it goes up, you can, you can actually objectively measure that you got more activity going on in that park.
And as John pointed out to me today, as a matter of fact, he said the more people that are using a park, the safer that park is.
That's true, that's also true.
So this, this will bring in more people to, to Horton Park.
Okay, any other questions for, okay, would I have a motion?
Move to approve, just.
Okay, any further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. You got the next one there, too.
All right, this is, uh, these are funds that are collected from institutions that are inspected, at our food, lodging, institutions. inspected, by our food, lodging, institutions inspectors, and they pay, they pay a P every year for those inspections to the state, so that the state can pass that money back to the counties to cover some of their costs for doing the inspections, because we often complain of non-funded mandates or unfunded mandates. So, they tried to fix that, and this is the program GS 138, 240, 8T. This year, in our environmental health section, we had several vacancies created, we were not fully staffed for the whole year, and we ended up with 75% compliance with our inspections for that, for that year. And as a result, we didn't get quite as much as we thought, but there's a base amount of $750 to pay you, and then based on the number of inspections that you completed to 100%, you're, you're given a fee to cover your cost. So, in our case, we were, we were to receive $5,229. This is money that the county's already budgeted into our environmental health line items, so essentially, this is money that's being, that the county won't have to spend to keep our program going. It doesn't add to our program, it just supplements what the county.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Jones? I'll let her down, watch you.
We move to approve.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? If all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, consider resolution addressing 2012-13 revenue shortfall, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, finance officer and I have been through the first round of budget reviews, and with that review, the departments had been projecting to use about 3.1 million of our fund balance. We've had, we have about 3.8 million appropriated. Normally, we don't use that much fund balance in a year, and the reason for that higher number, it appears that we're going to fall, fall well short of our sales tax budgets, and also the impacts of federal and state revenue cuts to programs and the sequestration issues. Normally, when I go through the first round of the budget, I feel a little bit better about the projected shortfall. I don't feel very good about this one. So, I'm asking the board for help in going ahead and approving the resolution that's presented on page 70, that allows to put in a hiring freeze for the next 90 days for all departments. Any capital purchases that have not been made, we're asking that the board go ahead and cut those capital expenditures for the rest of the year. If an emergency comes back up, we'll come back before the board for approval. And then, section three and four are things that I'll be working with on the departments to try to minimize other operational expenditures for the remaining part of the year. I would just, just say that, you know, right now, our sales tax revenues, we projected a 2% growth, and right now, we're looking at a 5% decline. So, there's quite a swing there, and that represents over $400,000 hit alone. So, right there, we need to make a pickup, and we think that these actions will help us pick that up.
Okay, are there any departments, John, that have to have somebody that we need to hire?
Well, what this does is it will force those departments to come to you to justify. So, and the main, the main departments were, you know, we have to do this, and I think we've been over this in passes, in the Sheriff's Department, DSS, and the Health Department. You know, so, and the board really needs, needs to take the action for those departments, because those department heads don't report to me. This puts a little bit more teeth into our action, and affects all departments, not just the departments I supervise.
Those are the high-density departments, obviously, on staff, but there are some low-density departments this could have a dramatic impact on. I'm, if, if, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask, I know one department's got an issue, I think the ag center's got an issue with this, and I'd like to, if it's possible, to have Ms. Conlon come up and describe that one position that, that I know that, that she was trying to get filled, and that this would.
That's why I, that's why I put in there currently advertised.
Right.
That position is currently advertised.
Okay, so, so she would be safeguarded on that one? Okay, good, I'm, I'm fine with it.
But can she still speak to, there's another issue, and while she's coming up, can, can you tell us which positions are currently advertised that won't fall under this?
That I know of, is, there's a position IT.
Okay, I've seen that one.
And her position, other than that.
Full-time ag agent.
That's right. Other than that, I don't think you have anything advertised right now, do you?
We're interviewing.
Yes, so she's already on down the process.
Okay, I mean, that, I just kind of wanted to get, get a clear picture of, of what's safe and what's not.
Okay, will that affect, if we go to SROs, will that affect?
No, sir. Does that one occur until after July?
Last year, in January, our ag agent resigned to take another job here in the county. In our district, in our association, we have five districts in Quap County Extension, and each of those districts have about 19 counties or so. And within those counties, our district directors have to make priority decisions on hiring. Because there were some other priority issues, the money that NC State had for their share of the cost share dollars for the positions, and we had a horticulture agent on staff at that time for all of last year, we were not priority to fill that ag position. In December of last year, our horticulture agent resigned, and so now we're without no ag position there. And so, that just gives me more responsibilities to fulfill the ag position and the horticulture position myself, as well as doing some of the administrative, or the administrative duties and the family consumer science issues. So, with the resignation of the horticulture agent, that popped us up and allowed us to have the ag agent be a priority for us to fill. We have advertised, we do have, set up an interview schedule already, and we do have three applicants that we are going to look at. I did go to the county manager early on and ask if we could do some creativeness with our positions. There is money in our budget, and I asked him if we could use just county dollars, because NC State does not have the cost share dollars for our horticulture position, but to use county dollars as an interim type process, so that we could hire a horticulture agent part-time. And that would be, you know, anywhere from 20 to 30 hours a week, no benefits, just coming in to manage the master garden program, to be reactive to the homeowners and the landowners that come in and asking horticulture questions, sort of fulfilling those kind of roles. We're now getting into the summer season, where our community gardens are, they're a hot issue now in Lee County. We've been working on it for three years, and now all of a sudden, it's a hot issue. So, we've gotten questions coming out, out the wazoo on that, so we really need that extra help. And so, that's when I saw that this was coming forward, I said, oh, you know, I'd like to have an exception to the rule there, and be considered to be able to go process, proceed forward with the part-time horticulture position.
We would have liked to have had an exception to the rule that we could have hired these people, in which I express my displeasure to your boss on several occasions, that they would not let us replace either one. So, I mean, I think that we need, we need to have full disclosure here, but, you know, we have an MOU that says that we pay a certain percentage of each salary of these positions, and I would say that NC State hasn't followed through on their part of the MOU. So, that's neither here nor there, I just wanted to put that info in there.
That's, that's good. I would, I would argue that, that what she's proposed just now, which is, is to hire the ag agent, and then to have a part-time horticulture agent, I think both of those make a whole lot of sense, even given our, our situation with underwhelming tax revenues. I think we need to do that. I think, I think this, this horticulture agent in particular is, is of concern to me. I make sure that we have that for the coordination, the essential coordination with community gardens and with the Department of Health, because this is, seems to be a big, a big trend towards community gardens and making more foods available, especially to the, to the underprivileged families in the county. And I, I think it's, it's just something we have to do.
Well, and one of the things, too, I've got to go to a meeting next week in Raleigh with some ag folks, and, and that's one of our big concerns, as, as John just addressed, is the university's lack of support for the county agents. And, and that's a big concern for a lot of us in agriculture, and we're going to make that heard loud and clear to the university, as well as to the legislature as well. And I think it's important, like you said, Jim, you know, well, you've advertised for the ag agent, so that's safe. But as far as the part-time position, you know, what my fear is, if we don't support that position, then it shows that we're not supporting, you know, having an individual like that in our county. I would like to be able to go to Raleigh next week and say, this is how important this is, and we need your help next time.
So, is that a motion? Or would you have a motion on?
We have a motion on this particular.
On the resolution.
Resolution, but, but as long as she's safeguarded there, then we'll have to revisit the part-time position at some point.
Definitely. I, I see that as an interim, stopgap measure right now.
But I'm saying, this, this would prohibit you from hiring that part-time person, you will need to come back on a case-by-case basis. And when you, when you're ready to hire a part, or execute a part-time position, we'll have to vote to approve the horticulture position. The only thing that's safeguarded here is your full-time ag agent.
Right, I understand.
Move to approve the resolution. How do you think? Any further discussion, questions? Thank you, Susan.
Just, just a question regarding the sequestration, that caught my eye when I saw that. What, what's the exact amount that's affecting us?
We're still.
I'm sorry.
We're still guessing. Ms. Potts is going to have to.
It's a game for everything, even on the, I'm sorry, I should not be saying that. It's a guessing game. No department yet has been able to get significant data or direct data, even on your interest rebates that we're supposed to get, on the bonds that are the, lending we did for the high school construction. Basically, we've been told to look at like 8.7%, but until I get the money, I won't know exactly how much it is. And that's kind of what everybody's been told. Everybody's having to work it down from the federal level to see the impact and stuff. So, the departments have yet to be able to tell me exactly what we're looking at.
Well, that would represent about $70,000 to $80,000 in, in that debt rebate.
Just for the high school project.
Just for the high school. That's the only one we're getting.
That doesn't get into the social services and acts from sequestration and health.
We did speak to Debbie Davidson at the enrichment, with the enrichment center last week. She is expecting it to affect some of her funding, and it was going to affect some of her programming. She's already got things lined up for when she finally does get the exact number, to figure out what she has to do. And what she's telling us is, you know, she's got one program that she would like to take it all out of, but she doesn't think they're going to let her do that, that it would have to be split amongst all the different programs that it funds, and therefore, she may end up having to close the center somewhere, or not, after offer certain, as many meals as she offers it in lunchtime.
They were talking about having to close for a day, you know, like Wednesday, and not provide those meals on a Wednesday. So, I mean, that would be a big.
It's huge.
Big load, not doing meals on wheels for one of the days during the week.
You know, if, if that ends up happening, we really need to take a look at public-private backup, where, where maybe CUOC, church, and body are trying to go back in that, supporting that day.
Civic club, somebody, yeah.
We use that health department, huh?
But I wish we could tell you more, and we have been asking as we've met with each person during the budget, and, you know, we don't even know what the impact's going to be next year, as to the, you know, impact on the budgets.
Any further discussion? I think we have a motion on the floor, right? Okay. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. You going to read the whole thing, John?
Does, sir.
Okay, John.
Going to try to make this, this short. I did say at the last meeting that we had received the economic summit report from SBTDC and Ted Abernathy, and I did say that we would discuss it. And really, my, my purpose of discussing, number one, it's a pretty comprehensive document, but there still is a next step to go through. And that next step is trying to finalize the plan. On page 79, the consultant suggests, you know, we should ask the question, are we going to seek additional public input? You know, we need to develop matrices to, you know, determine, you know, what our outputs will be from the plan, what our goals will be in the plan. And their contract pretty much went up through this report, and when we get their final invoice, let me see what I have to do with that one, here we go. So far, we've already paid them $19,875, and we have one invoice that's now due for So, the total that we have paid for the project up to this point is almost $25,000. And to bring this to a conclusion, you know, depending upon how you answer some of those questions, it could range from another $5,000 to $10,000 to bring this all to an end, and have a planned document with measurable outputs, responsibilities, who's going to do what going forward.
Well, you said additional $5,000 to complete, that would answer the mail only, that wouldn't encourage additional public inputs. That wouldn't, that wouldn't bring them back down here for additional, for additional surveying and, and goal development or any of that.
That's correct.
And, and I think what they're, what they're looking for now is something much broader than this.
I would say yes. And then, of course, you know, it really comes back to what the board wants to do for this. I mean, there's a lot of good information here, but it really doesn't set us out onto the path that we're going to take. And so, you know, what do we want to do next? And, and, you know, I wasn't asking, you know, for y'all to make that determination tonight, but, you know, maybe start having some discussion on, on, you know, what we were going to do next.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I sent out an email earlier today to yourself and the county manager, and, and wanted to make sure that, and I'll share this with the rest of the board, there were three points that I thought that needed to be made about where we are in the process. One, because it's a little confusing, there, there are really two major initiatives that are going on right now, and people tend to get them co-mingled, and I want to make sure that they're kept separate and distinct. One of those is this whole notion of the transition of the Economic Development Corporation into an integrated organization with the Chamber of Commerce and all that. That's a separate project, separate, separately sanctioned and progressing, you know, very nicely. I think there's, there's a lot of good things that are going with that. I think, you know, having, having Donnie and his board working hand in glove with the chamber and with Crystal, our consultant, it's working real well, that's, that's progressing on its own track, and, and we provide the inputs as appropriate. And, and I think that there's nothing we really need to do more, other than just continue to review and, and input to that process as it's going on. There's a separate, distinct initiative that, that relates to that, but it's separate, and that is this, this whole strategic planning process. And what we undertook last year, when we started this, down this track, was, was independent of the EDC. We wanted a county strategic plan, and this county strategic plan was aimed, aimed at growing the county economically out, well out into the future, with an eye towards five or 10 years downstream, and where we wanted to be and how we wanted to get there. There were, there was feedback several years back that said, no, we really shouldn't try to get into that game, we should, we should just let the economy do what it does, and let businesses. we should just let the economy do what it does and let businesses develop the way they do. And I think there's been a consensus opinion that that's not the way we want the county to grow. We wanna, cause we, we have a, we have a role in, in that growth and that we need to help shape that growth intelligently if we can. So this strategic plan was aimed at trying to build not just a, a theoretical, high-level document that says we wanna get bigger and better and faster and all of that, but rather specify some growth objectives, some, some goals for five to 10 years downstream where we wanna be and diversifying the economy and having, you know, more prosperity in the county, define those specifically, and then, and then build a roadmap towards that. You know, here are some specific tasks we wanna accomplish or interim objectives we wanna accomplish to get to those, those, that end state. So that we have a roadmap and we, and then we can provide that roadmap as the county commissioners, this board's inputs to the EDC, when it, when it morphs into its new position or its new, new structure, this is our roadmap. And, and our funding in the future will be contingent upon you staying on this roadmap. If you go off of it, then, then we reserve the right not to fund you at the same levels we have in the past. So I think those were, these are two separate initiatives that have, that both of which are worthy and noble and that need to continue. But the strategic plan, just so everyone understands, this, this thing we were funding with our taxpayers' dollars and that we're gonna continue to shape and mold that and, and, and develop that downstream. We certainly want the EDC's inputs, the chamber, the committee of a hundred, all other stakeholders, the other jurisdictions, all the stakeholders, we want their input and we welcome it. But this is something the county's funding and the county will continue to, to press forward with. I think where we are now is that this thing could be closed out, as the county manager just said, with an additional five thousand, we could close it out and call it a day. But we really haven't accomplished the objective if we do that. And I think that what I've seen personally from the SPTDC to this point is, is been encouraging. I think that they've gotten their arms around where we are now. They've assimilated all of the documentation, all the studies from the past. And they're now ready to move forward to building those goals, those long-range economic goals for the county and building those interim objectives for us. And, and I, I don't wanna stop now because if we do, I think what'll happen is we'll end up the exact same place we've been over the last five or 10 years. And I think I'll get hit and nods from the EDC and the chamber on that. We, we will not have really accomplished the end game if we stop now. I think we need to continue on. But I do think it's also prudent for us to maybe put a, a cap on this thing at some point. We, whether we do it tonight or do it at the next meeting, we need to put a cap on this and say, okay, SPTDC, we want you to tell us how much more to name that to. You know, how much more is it gonna take to get us to that level? And what's your action plan to get us there? And, and can you do it in six months? Uh, cause we need to have something, I think by the end of this year, so that this new integrated EDC will have that action plan to work off of as they go into this, this campaign to raise funds and to do all the other things they gotta do. They need to have it, something from the county at least, not that they necessarily have to agree with everything that's in there. They just need to know where we're headed. So that they know what to go out and raise funds for.
I'd argue maybe not even say the end of this year, but maybe by August, you know, um, just to give them more time. I mean, I think that's a reasonable time.
Are we talking end of fiscal year or fiscal year?
Well, I really think to, with the timing of, of the new organization coming into, into being, we're gonna, I think I agree with Commissioner Dahl Ripple that, you know, we're gonna need to have something right after the first of the fiscal year, July first, to say, you know, here's what we're gonna hang our hat on and this is what we wanna do going forward.
Right.
And so, you know, let's, you know, let's, let's keep them moving until we get the final document. And so, I think based on what I heard, if it's the consensus of the board, you know, I'll get with, with Dan and Ted tomorrow and have them put a proposal together to bring this to, to, you know, the end that we wanna see.
Mm-hmm.
And have them break it down so we can, you know, go through the menu.
Yeah. The, the other thing I tell you is that, is that I know that these guys have got some limited bandwidth and, and their personal ability. I would like to see them both personally engaged going forward, cause they got a lot of our intellectual capital that they've got now. They've built that into their, their data banks. I don't wanna see us lose that. If, if they, if they parse this out to some other staff member, I want us to keep Dan and Ted both engaged, helping us produce this, this, this final plan.
Did I understand you say we're approaching or right at twenty-five thousand dollars right now?
Yes, sir.
And you're gonna ask them to bring it to a conclusion and they're gonna give you some other?
Page.
Figure?
Yes, sir.
How much are we willing to put out there, folks?
Would you have budgets?
We're budgeting as you go along. That's why I'm bringing it up again tonight, cause we're out of what you, we're out of funds of what you authorized me to spend.
To make it a viable product, we need something that has metrics and goals and measurements, uh, you know, required requirements in there that, that we can measure and measurable goals that we can, so we can see some progress.
The other thing is, is they can't produce those out of thin air. They have to actually get their, they have to be back in here talking to Donnie and Bob and Brad and others. They've gotta be back in here to.
Well, I agree with you.
Oh, we certainly do, yeah.
At least before the final product, so.
In fact, we need to have, in my mind, we need to have at least one more workshop, voluntary attendance workshop, but one more public workshop where we talk about specific measurable goals, uh, short and long term. I mean, we gotta get to that. They really baited us on the last one. And it was a great one, but they, they showed all of these charts about where we were and where we are and compared us to the other counties. And, and what it did is it got, you know, we, it got the creative juices flowing, but it really didn't capture, you know, what we do to remedy that in, in some of these areas.
What, what I read in, in what was included in our agenda tonight is like the halfway point.
Yep, that's right.
I mean, you know, I mean, that's, that's where it is. It's, it's, it's the halfway point.
I would like to just, yeah, I'd like to just tell you that, you know, these, you know, a lot of times these plans can cost a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to try to do. And one of the reasons we were working through the SPTDC was, you know, they do it at a less expensive.
Right.
And pay as you go.
Yeah. So if, if you, if you were to authorize me to spend and, you know, to keep this going right now and say, okay, we wanna keep this under fifty, you know, when, when everything's clean and done. So go talk with them and see if they can do it for less than that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think that would be appropriate. I mean, we're getting, we're getting a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar plan for fifty thousand. So.
Well, if you wanna compare this, I mean, what do we give Evergreen to do, to do a financial assessment of the schools and ours? It was a hundred and thirty-four thousand, right?
A hundred and forty.
A hundred and forty thousand. Okay, so, um, you know, comparatively, I mean, we're, we're talking about setting a, setting a, you know, a, a long-range plan with interim objectives. I think we're getting a heck of a value.
And it's for the whole county, not just for.
That's right. So I, I would, I would propose, I'll even make the motion, that we empower the county manager to negotiate with SPTDC and their partners to sustain this effort with a cap of fifty thousand dollars unless he comes back to us with a.
Tot, total, not an additional.
Fifty thousand total.
Total.
He hasn't closed out yet, so.
Well, one of the things, Triangle J, that are meetings there, at the time we raised this issue that we've got this, um, going on, all of a sudden ears per cup and pencils start writing, you know? It's like they're waiting for us to finish it up so they can piggyback, so.
And, and you bring that up. Triangle J did their own survey. And I don't know that, that we got that to the SPTDC. There was a Triangle J, uh, survey that they did of all the, the region. And I think it would be helpful to get that information to them as well. It was pretty detailed.
See if we can get that.
Yeah.
I'm glad you put a cap on it. I don't know that I like that price any, any better, but at, at least we've got something in place here. So to control, you know, people can become very interested in exploring new ideas on somebody else's dollar.
Well, the thing about it though, you know, having lived here a while, we've been at this point several times over the years. And I'm, yeah, Donnie, Bob, you know, I mean, we, we've had some really great minds and, and good intentions. And people have gotten together for a few days and had a lot of flip charts and PowerPoints. And we've gotten here and then it's just sort of stopped.
Yeah, that's where it's really working.
And, you know, so let's, let's get to the end product. And I think, otherwise, we've wasted twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, I'll also add, as the chair was talking to the health department about, um, being able to defend the use of the funds, that we're putting this kind of money in this package, I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to quantify what we've done.
That's right.
And that it gets used the way it was intended right away.
Yeah. Cause otherwise it's useless.
And we've wasted money.
So we have a motion on the floor?
I was, I was just wondering what would be the, the working plan? What would be the, the working product? And I know we're talking about maybe we have half of it accomplished, but I'm just wondering, I know we're trying to put a cap, but what would they say or what would, would be their measurement of a working cap? I have no idea.
That's.
That's the deliverable, I think is that word.
They, yeah, you, you, you want a final strategic plan that, that describes action plans that the county is going to take, you know, to achieve the goals that are, you know, pretty, we've had a lot of goals, a lot of suggestions on what people would like to see come out of the plan already. That's in the document today.
Yeah, that's my.
But in, until you take those goals and then put measurable deliverables with, with those goals, um, you know, how you get to that point, and these guys have done it before, you know?
Well, it's not only that, but you want to make assignments. I see who would step up to accomplish those goals and have that definitely in place. And then have some measurable, uh, metrics to say, are we accomplishing what we set out to do? And so we haven't had that before.
They, they did give us a taste of where they're headed.
Yeah.
Uh, if you look at pages one twenty-six and one twenty-seven of their, of their report, it does show key recommendations. And I think that's kind of a, of a, of a high-level outline of where they're headed. And this is based on a lot of the feedback they've gathered from us and synthesized current situation we have now. These are, these are things that they will be fleshing out as part of that final plan that I think, and I, and I don't, I don't have any issues with any of those, any of those eight items.
I think that the, the question that I have is that even with these key recommendations, you know, what is the cap that they would suggest to us or we can suggest to them? And that's what I'm trying to get. I know the fifty thousand dollars is what.
No, I have twenty-five, no, twenty-five.
Well, another twenty-five is what you were suggesting. Well, another thirty, actually. Cause John said twenty and then maybe another five. And so.
Yeah, we're up to twenty-five.
You're up to twenty-five now? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. But, uh, you know, if we can see what, what, you know, they would suggest that we, cause maybe we can get it less than that. I mean, you know, if we negotiate. So, that's what I'm thinking. John's a good negotiator.
Well, and I will amend the motion that I made a minute ago to include that, that he bring back to us the, the number of hours worked and the, the general outline of how they intend to engage those, you know, to use those hours and, and the rate that goes with it. Just so we can have something to, to see other than just a, you know, a round figure.
That'll work.
That's working.
Do you have a?
Number of hours worked.
Number of hours worked, uh, hourly rate and the, the, uh, general outline of how those hours will be, uh, consumed. What, what tasks they're gonna perform with those hours.
Are you talking about future or?
Oh, the additional, additional twenty-five thousand or less that we're gonna empower the county manager to negotiate.
Okay. But do we have it for what they've already done? That same affirmation?
Um, I do have that. Not with you.
Yes?
Yes, I do have that, but not with you.
Okay, any further discussion? Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Okay. Manager's report.
Sorry, this will be a short one, I think. Um, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Gaynor Lee on making three, thirty years with the county.
Yay!
And that our county, our county attorney in waiting has a birthday today.
Yay!
She turned twenty-five finally.
Commissioner Smith and I attended the fire captains' meeting last week and discussed the sales tax distribution, uh, possible changes. And, uh, received a favorable response from them as to, uh, turning any increase in sales tax revenue back of the county. Their interest is keeping their tax rate at a level area. Their citizenry has said that. Um, but I say that the fire captains have to go back to their board of directors and discuss, um, that issue with them. I volunteered to attend any of their board of directors' meetings and discuss, you know, how that change would work out. And, um, haven't had anybody take me up on it yet, but I expect that they will. Um, I wanna bring to your attention your calendar and your, and your agenda packet. Um, you know, I know it's still thirty days off, but on April thirtieth, we have the Sharon Harris drill. Um, really the chairman and I and, uh, the clerk. Clerk will actually be up in Raleigh. Um, but, uh, we have to, we're pretty much all-day participants in that. But I would encourage, um, all the board members to come to the EOC on that day so they can see the EOC actually in operation. Um, if, if you haven't been in the EOC and haven't spent some time down there, uh, the new room that we have to operate in and then also the offices we have to go expand into, um, to do, to do things that happen on such an event, um, is pretty impressive. So you should see the work that has happened there and, and just see what's going on with the drill. But, um, I wanna make sure you.
What time is it?
It starts at eight o'clock in the morning. It goes all day. So whatever your, whatever, yeah, whatever your timeframe is for that day, anytime you could drop in, uh, you might wanna drop in around breakfast or lunch because they do feed you well during the day. Yeah.
More questions?
You won't go away hungry.
Since you're on the calendar, John, um, I know it is gonna be tied up. Now, what about the agenda for the sixth meeting?
Uh, we will, uh, already have that ready.
Wait, okay.
So, um, the Sharon Harris Day Two is really follow-up. So, um, you know, that's where they do the debrief and, and, um, talk about things. I don't know, do you have to take part in the debrief? So, um.
There's only four of us connected to you. Myself, Shane, Susan Conlon, and Terrell John, who's had to go. This is something different that's never been done before.
Okay, I, I knew that I hadn't gotten notice on that second day.
Yeah, we're not responsible for, for May first.
Okay. But that's an all-day, yeah.
Um, we haven't discussed whether, you know, how that's gonna affect the agenda on the sixth. But, uh, I'm sure Gaynor and I will discuss that. We, we can't think beyond April fifteenth right now, so, next meeting, so. Um, and then on Ap- April sixteenth, we have the Stars presentation. Um, I did wanna bring up one other thing that, uh, we're starting to get a lot more attention all the way around, um, on the oil and gas. Don Kabaskits and his group, um, their little secrets out about the, uh, GIS thing that they showed you. And, uh, we're getting our hits on our webpage and the phone calls to them on that have probably tripled. Um, and then the state has become more interested in us. We have a meeting Wednesday with, uh, the air quality folks. Um, and a little staff meeting has turned into quite a meeting, um, with practically the whole air quality department coming to see us Wednesday. So, um, you know, well, I bring that up because, you know, we have discussed previously that we need to start getting into the planning mode, um, and trying to get a handle on, on the, the oil and gas and, and how things are going to transpire into the county. And I think, you know, uh, things are starting to pick up quite a bit. And then we probably need to start, get through this budget. And we're gonna have to jump right into it and start meeting on it. And, and, uh, especially bring Mr. Birdwell and his crowd into it and start, and start trying to get out ahead of it. Cause it's, uh, you can ask, um, the Oil and Mining Commission chairman, his, uh, his schedule has become quite busy with the meetings that are going on. So, um, it's, it's moving along.
I would, I think your, his, his level of activity is gonna double again. You're talking about Don Kabaskits and GIS. Just this afternoon, there was a, a long, uh, video teleconference or teleconference with, uh, meeting. or teleconference with a meeting on the, on the revenues and sources of revenue study group for the commission, and, and it was publicly announced at that meeting of Don Kabaskits and his email statewide about how he, and they, they echoed, they said they, they passed on the sentiment today that there was only one county in the state that had its act together in terms of, of split estate deeds of trust and documenting it and having it on G I S, and it was Don's name that was mentioned. They had surveyed Moore, Chatham, Lee, Stokes, and Rockingham Counties, the five lucrative counties for oil and gas plus others, and they, they listed Don as the model and the way it's supposed to be done. So he's, he's about to see his level of activity increase, and, and it's, it's a good and a bad thing. I know that here we are constrained on our budget, and now he's going to become the go-to guy statewide about how to do this right. And I would imagine Molly is going to get the same sort of level of increase since then she was, she was also heralded as, as being the one register of deeds that had it together. So I, I think what's going to happen is we're going to see a, a level of increase in, in telephone inquiries and emails and all the other things they've got to do to kind of help the other counties get ready. That's going to have a budget impact on us. And I, obviously, I've, I've got a bias here, I think that it's, it's, it's well worth doing that for the state, but there's also, it's also, they need to capture how much additional time has been committed to that task. And if appropriate, I'll be glad to take that back to Deaner and to the, into the legislature and tell them, you know, we need, we need some special consideration down here, because we're, we're actually becoming the, you know, the, the information repository, and it's consuming a lot of our precious staff time to help the rest of the state get ready.
Do we need a motion for you to do that?
No, I'll be glad to do it, I'll, you don't need a motion, I'll be glad to pass that back and to capture that if, 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 or if staff will capture it and, and then, and then convey that to me in any mechanism they feel is appropriate. Email or telephone call saying, you know, I spent twenty hours this week.
Exactly.
If my average week is, you know, gone up by X percent really committed to this particular task, I'll be glad to put that back to the, to the legislature.
Because if, if they're.
I think we can capture it, and we've, we've met with Molly on her budget, and she is the one bright spot in the budget from a revenue standpoint. Her revenue's up because of all the filings.
Right.
That are going on with, with the leases and, and some land transfers that are occurring with us.
Yeah.
And even some more splits, so, you know, it's, it's really starting to, you can just see it, it's just picking up, and the activity's picking up, and the staff is starting to spend more time on it, and I only see them starting to spend more time going forward.
But like Jim is saying, you know, if, if we're starting to field questions from other counties.
Providing reports, briefings.
Right, if it's, if it's taking our, our folks' time to serve other counties, then we need some help either from those counties or from the state level.
Well, it's one of the angles you better take a look at, and that is, if Don is the man, he's going to become very appealing to some other counties and other positions even at state level, so.
He's, actually, he's already had a job offer, Bradford County, Pennsylvania offered him a job.
It's topical right now.
That's what is active in oil and gas right now.
Something's going to need to be thinking about.
That's right.
I don't think anybody's taking it serious.
Oh, I'm taking it seriously.
What happens when Don, who's the Don backup?
I will tell you that when we.
Mr. Abernathy works well.
When we met with the Pennsylvania delegation one year ago up at Naco, they said, don't worry about the environmental issues, your state will take care of it, don't worry about this, don't, don't. The number one problem you will have is if the industry comes to your county is keeping your best people.
That's true.
That's what they told us.
And that makes, that's common sense?
That's right.
Let me ask you, who's going to be engaged or involved in the meeting you're talking about?
Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
With the air quality?
I sort of try to get an understanding of who's meeting, who's going up, who's going to be there.
Ms. Holman, who heads up Air Quality's coming down, she's got three of her staff.
For representing Lee County, we'll have Mr., Commissioner Womack, we'll have Don and myself, Dr. Chris Cameron, President and CEO of Camery Testing in Sanford will be there as well. And then we have Sheila Holman, Director, Mike Abra, I don't know how to pronounce that last name, Abra Zinkyas, he's the Deputy Director, Donnie Redmond, Ambient Monitor Chief, and Jim Boyer, Air Toxics Monitoring Lab. And I, you know, what they're really after in this is they're trying to get those sites that potentially they could put this eight-by-eight structure with the testing equipment on, it's supposed to be in kind of a secluded area away from, you know, a lot of industry and traffic and that kind of stuff. You know, they want to set up testing equipment here, so.
This is going to be the, the third leg of the, of the, of the stool. They've already got water quality baselining going on, they've got seismic baselining going on at two sites around the county, and now they will have the air quality monitoring. We'll be the first place in North Carolina to do an air quality monitoring.
And Terrell will be there too.
Okay, so you're not representing Lee County, you are?
No, I'm representing the Mining and Energy Commission at that meeting.
Okay, then I'm representing Lee County too.
That's pretty dicey. You know it is, you don't have to ask me that, you know that is. I know, you know, that's very, very nice. I'm very concerned that, that could appear to be a conflict.
I don't follow your logic.
I bet you don't.
What time's the meeting?
Just remember, you heard it.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock is the moment.
You, you're representing the state as well?
I'm representing the state, I'm not representing the county in that meeting.
Your presence certainly gives that appearance, and the man to my right certainly recognizes your role on the vote.
Well, well, if there's a conflict there, don't you think the county manager would bring it up? Or did he, if he perceived it?
That'd be smart.
Sure he would, sure he would. I mean, it doesn't gain him anything by having.
What does the attorney say?
I don't think there's a conflict, but if you need somebody else there, let Charlie go.
Well, it needs to be.
What time is it?
Ten o'clock.
It needs to be somebody else there.
At the Summit Building in the back conference room.
You recognize, of course, what the purpose of this meeting is. The purpose of the meeting is, is to, is for the county manager and, and the staff of the county to provide to the Division of Air Quality of Deaner the best sites to do air quality monitoring.
And your role is to do what?
My, my simple. No, I don't know, I don't, the only, the only potential site I could have any influence over would be if it was in my backyard, which it's not going to be. The only, the only reason I'm there is because the Environmental Standards Committee of the Mining and Energy Commission has to establish the statewide standard for air quality. Unless the, the Deaner standard from Division of Air Quality already covers everything. I'm only there to make sure that the Mining and Energy Commission's interest in this thing for, for rulemaking is being, is being satisfied. To, to, for, for Deaner to come down to Lee County and propose to do baseline testing at a particular site without any involvement of the Mining and Energy Commission would be, would be ill-advised. I mean, they, they need to have our input, because we're one of the major players, we're writing the rules for the state. And I'm only there as a, I mean, it wouldn't matter which county they were doing this in.
Hey, John, where, where is it located again?
In that back conference room, finance, by finance, at the Summit Building.
Is it on Wednesday morning?
Yes, ten o'clock.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
I'm not available. So Kirk will go. Do you have anything else, Tim?
Tag team. I, I thought, are you available?
No, sir, I'm finished.
I don't have a problem with Jim being there, but I see what you're saying, I mean, there, you know.
You might have a problem.
I, 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 I see what you're saying, I mean, I think with.
Because he had, you have a staff, you have other members on that commission who could also attend in your stead, is that?
I could, I could, I could drive one mile to that meeting and take notes for the commission, or I could ask someone to drive in here from forty-five miles away and take a day. But I'm not going to do that, that's ridiculous. And, and the one guy who chairs that committee that I monitor, the one guy that chairs it is in Disneyland right now with his family, he's not going to even be here. So I, I just, I don't, I don't think it's, it's fair and appropriate for, for me to back away from a meeting that's in my county that, that I can easily attend and pass on information, relevant information. I mean, it's just, that's asking someone for, for no, for no reason. I, it's like Susan saying that I couldn't come to the meetings on the, on the water testing that they did. I went to all of those meetings on the water testing. And, and I don't think there was a conflict there, was there?
No, Susan doesn't report to you. You don't report to him, do you?
I report to all of you.
Do you report directly to him?
Okay, um, would be better than that.
I, I can get it.
No, you haven't.
Okay, if you want to.
Jim can enlighten me on air quality.
Mr. Frager, you have some comments?
No, I'm, I'm okay.
Um, I'm, I'm keeping my powder dry right now, but I'm, I'm, I'm working with you. I, I will have to say that I attended the Health and Human Services Workshop in New Bern last week, and I'll get with Ms. Potts and a few other people soon, because it scared me to death, I'm just going to say that. Normally, when I meet with the Institute of Government folks, they've got some good news in with some of the bad news, and they kind of lift you up and give you hope, and not a whole lot of that those two days. And all of us, there were thirty-one of us that attended, and got a lot of great information, another thick notebook full of notes, but it, it was worthwhile, and I'm trying to get something together to share with all of you. I just got back, and then we had Easter and getting ready for this meeting, but lots of information, it's going to be rough for the next couple of years. Sorry, I couldn't give you sunshine, but it, it, it was worthwhile, and they're going to try to get some information online for the commissioners that couldn't go, they're interested in getting information.
Mr. Smith, you have a question?
Just an update, had my first fire advisory meeting last week, that was fun. The chairman had referred to the emergency, emergency coordinator, Mr. Seagroves, regarding a fire hydrant issue on the corner of Buckhorn and Avens Ferry, which one, two or three of the fire chiefs there mentioned that there were other issues with fire hydrants in the county, primarily fire hydrants that were damaged in automobile accidents and weren't replaced. They had one where there was a sinkhole, and they took the fire hydrant out, fixed the pipe, and didn't put the hydrant back, which caused me to ask for some detailed information from Don's office regarding an overview of all the fire hydrants in the county where they're supposed to be. And according to Don, he doesn't know about the hydrants that have not been replaced. And then found out from some of the fire chiefs that hydrants were proposed, they're on the map, but they're not on the ground. So we've broken down all of the fire districts, coordinated maps for them to go and check their district and get back to us in June, so that we can, when we get back with the city on the tenth, we'll be able to present with them an issue regarding fire hydrants. This has an impact on citizens' insurance rates, as well as our, our readiness to, you know, keep control of a very serious situation.
How did they get on the map and we not know that they're not on the ground?
Don, according to Don, he received that information, especially when they put the new water line out on South Plank Road. And the South Plank Road plan had them, it designated intervals, and that fire chief brought it to our attention that those designated intervals are not as they were planned on the map. So Don received information from the planning of the actual water line and put that in.
Do you know about how many?
No.
No, you don't.
The original, the original fire hydrants were put into G I S based off of the plan design, whether they were, you know, we never went back, I would call it an ASBIL, never went back and did an ASBIL to see where those were. And so that's, that's really the attempt now of the Fire Chiefs Association is to create that ASBIL where they are and get that back so that we can map them and then make a decision on if we're sure.
While they're at it, they need to take a GPS device and get the lat long or get the, the GPS coordinates for each and every one of them that they go out there and check to make sure they got, they're in the right places anyway, if they're going to go out there and survey them.
The maps, the maps are quite accurate, I mean, you can look at the physical structure, because the maps are that detailed. So you can see that corner and that intersection and see, or you can see that driveway with the actual address on it, where that particular hydrant is supposed to be.
I started initially looking into this because a question came about why the fire hydrant wasn't in a certain place. It's, I think it was two thousand feet that they were supposed to be between fire hydrants. And Buckhorn Road didn't have those, or not Buckhorn, but Forty-two doesn't have those.
No, no, Avens Ferry doesn't.
And Avens Ferry doesn't. So it's, Buckhorn does, actually, but not Avens Ferry.
Right.
So we don't know how many other don't have those, but that's what's supposed to be a requirement.
It says a requirement of every two hundred feet.
Two thousand.
Two thousand feet.
And, and for full disclosure, I live on Avens Ferry Road.
Well, and at one time, weren't they about six hundred and fifty dollars a piece, or is that? Okay.
Tap fee, that's a tap fee.
Okay, tap, okay. It's up now, yes.
Well, that, that discussion came up while you.
Gotcha.
While you bring that up, that discussion came up, and according to the fire chiefs, they contract a cor, a contractor to come in and put a fire hydrant in.
What was the rate, they?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, uh-huh.
And while we're talking about money, I attended the Fort Bragg Regional Alliance last week. And just to give you an information, I learned a new acronym, it's called P, Programic Environmental Assessment, and I thought it had something to do with clean air and clean water. No, has to do with the impact of eight thousand troops being cut at Fort Bragg. So that was a new acronym for me. It was a lot of doom and gloom because of sequestration, and two of the individuals with the Fort Bragg Regional Alliance were probably basically giving us their, was fun working with you, we enjoyed working with you, we really look forward to seeing in the future, but we're all looking for jobs. So that was one of the points. The other one was that they're going to ask the, and correct me if I'm wrong, their figures on their briefing was thirty thousand dollars for the county to pay for dues this year.
Yes, that was the notice we got, yeah.
More to follow on that.
You got it from last year?
Twenty thousand, five hundred.
And I would add that they told us last year that there was a plan to become self-sufficient by this budget year. So I'm, as much as I'm sympathetic towards the Fort Bragg Regional Alliance,
Sure.
and Kirk can speak to the recent stuff, I, I still think that we need to hold them to that, that we're not committing money, especially if, if there's a chance they're going to go out of existence anyway.
And, and I do want to say thank you to Susan and Bill, Bill Stone, working for that, our youth program that we're going to have in July. And if you have any seventh, the rising seventh and tenth graders, we'd love to see their applications come through. I understand we already have three.
Yes, I just want to say, express my appreciation to Ms. Conlon for hosting the many study group meetings out at the Ag Center, and they always do a marvelous job of hosting those, those Mining and Energy Commission study groups, and it keeps it local and it allows for public participation that we wouldn't ordinarily get out of Raleigh. Also want to thank Mr. Joyce and, and Mr. Simpson and Mr. Olden from the E D C for supporting some of the industry visits and, and helping us out there, I really appreciate that, and I know the community does as well. As we get oil and gas industry visits into Lee County, you know, there's not a dedicated cell yet that's, that's earmarked just to come entertain these folks like we do morally senior developments. So I appreciate them sending that effort to help business development in the area and help educate and inform people. And hopefully we'll get a, a team at the state level to help us. I've, I've asked the state to form a business development team to assist us, because I mean, right now it seems like we're carrying the water for the state of North Carolina and, and trying to, trying to incubate this industry, and hopefully we'll, we'll get the state to, to pitch in and, and then, and then the regional.
regional partnership as well so that we're not having to carry it all load. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Reed?
Based on what I've heard this evening, April fifteenth meeting could possibly be a very inventive meeting, and I would ask that the chair consider an earlier start for any of those long meetings that we may have between now and July one.
Good idea. Do you want to put that forward, Morgan?
I do and I will.
You want to tie?
I think for the next, what is, uh, thirty, sixty, next ninety days or the next six, or five meetings, we ought to start maybe around three or four, whatever you want to do. But we need some earlier starting times.
Okay, let me see. We've got some folks here that maybe work, have a work scheduling conflict, so.
Yeah, work scheduling conflict. On board?
Oh, yeah.
And on, try?
Yeah, I'd raise.
Can we do four-thirty with that, with that?
Yeah, you can do four-thirty, but they can also do like I used to do. Make arrangements and catch me if you want to be here. But I'm bound for three.
Okay. Any discussion, though?
I, I would support, I, I think Commissioner Reeves brings, raises an excellent point. We're going to have some lengthy meetings. April fifteenth definitely will go long unless everybody rolls over on sales tax and all that other stuff. So, so April fifteenth is going to be a long one.
I like it.
So, so April fifteenth will be a long meeting. And then as we get into May, the county manager's budget and there are going to be some things coming up, budget related. So I, we should anticipate now through the end of June.
Pack a lunch, supper, whatever.
And we might, and, and by the way, I would also offer to you that, that we ought to take into account maybe a fifteen-minute break at the halfway point of these meetings where we're going to be into it because, because it's, they're going to be long.
Okay, so the way I understand the motion is that the next few meetings, we meet at four-thirty?
I'll move that we, that we start the, the meetings at, at four-thirty PM.
I think, I think you would say you want to change your regular meeting time for the next five meetings to four-thirty.
I see now.
That takes care of it.
Okay, so you heard the motion, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
For both? No. One? Okay.
I would need one.
Okay. Is that the only thing you have, Mr. Reed? I, I'd like, for one, commend our county employees and John and Gayle for all that they do for us, level expertise and willingness to share that knowledge. I know every time that I've had questions, they've been answered properly and willingness to meet and work on issues to make these things flow a little bit easier. And I really appreciate that. Also, the outside people that come to us to, to get information, we've always been at the forefront of getting that and I really appreciate it. Triangle J meetings, I showed up at a wrong meeting for city, for the managers of city and county and actually learned a lot, so I'm glad I, I'm glad I stayed.
It was a different perspective, wasn't it?
It was a different perspective and we learned quite a bit on, that we were able to bring back actually and helped John a little bit, I think, with his budget. In meeting with the city-county representatives, I'm a little disappointed in the fact that some of our smaller counties aren't standing up and making their wants and wishes known. And I think, you know, what we sometimes criticize Triangle J for is our own fault. And so I've made it, I'm, I'm making it a point that we're going to start taking our issues there a little bit stronger and see if we can get some help. If for some reason we end up in another district, fine, we'll do the same thing there. But I think we need to start standing up for ourselves because we, we've got the expertise in our county. We're, I, I don't, I'm not impressed listening to the larger counties, I really am not. So I think we need to start standing up and, you know, getting some support for what we need, need to work there. I'd like to thank each one of the commissioners for attending the committee meetings and representing us whenever we have invitations for special events, ribbon cuttings, things like that. I've asked each one of you to, to help me out a little bit with some of those ribbon cuttings because my wife goes into surgery Friday, so I won't be available as much and I'm going to ask each one of you if you could help me out a little bit there and I'll give you some calls. But I appreciate what you're doing. I do get phone calls, I do get people walking up saying they appreciate what you're doing. And so I, I really want to keep that going because I, I do appreciate each one of you taking this job seriously. And that's all I have. So unless somebody else has some other comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Have a good night.